Good morning and welcome to the Cook County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting on February 23rd. We're ready for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any adjustments to the agenda? None? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Commissioner Gamble first, Commissioner Moll second. Sorry, Bev, we had hand gestures over here.
That's all right. Long story.
Anyone opposed? All in favor?
Hand gestures will just reek in our hands, by the way.
Now we have an opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to public comment? Kay, if you could come up and write your name on this list here and I'll just let you know how public comment operates in here. It's your opportunity to address the county board on any matter of county concern. Please state your name and address on the topic you're addressing. You may speak respectfully for up to five minutes. The county board members may ask or answer questions of the speaker, but issues shall not be debated during public comment. At the board's discretion, the board may agree to schedule matters addressed during public comment. All discussion must be civil in nature and must be directed at the board, not members of the audience. So, we just need your name on the paper so Bev can keep it for record and then if you could state your name for the board, because not everyone's familiar.
Sure. I'm Frank Ceo. The last name is spelled C-E-O. I live at 302 Mile of Pine, up by Douglas Lake. And I'd like to address the board, I'd like to address the Dollar General issue, not to tell you what to do, but I did come up with an idea and I'd like to present it to the board for its consideration. In attending to different meetings, there seem to be three different threats. And one threat is the cost of living is very high and a lot of people on a limited budget need something like Dollar General to make ends meet. And the second tier is, we also want to protect the character of our town and our local business community. And the third tier is, we also need more income and more jobs, year-round, that people can earn money. And I had an idea that would address all three of these. And just wanted to present it out here and see if it's something that the board might want to give some direction to and see if it wants to take it to a further step. And that is, all stores, all the major stores, big box stores, even the Dollar General type thing, have shopper services where you can call or go online, place an order, and they will deliver it for free to the local store. We don't have to have a local store in Grand Marais to take advantage of that. What we need is someone or some service that would simply pick up the stuff wherever the Dollar General or Family Dollar or Target or whatever it may be, to pick it up in, let's say Duluth, and on a regular basis, bring it up here. And that would do, that would provide a, the low-cost goods for those who need it. It'd be enough of a, kind of a pain barrier, you know, it's a little inconvenient, so people would take advantage of those who really need it, but those who can afford it, not would as we can, and we shop locally. And I will admit, I once in a while I'll stop by a Sam's Club or something in Duluth if I'm passing through. So, the idea is that if we could find someone who would either go there on a regular basis, and the first thought that came to mind was the new air transit service, or Tim Anderson's car service, or something like that, that someone who's going to Duluth anyway, that this could be a little add-on service, provide a way for people to make, place their orders. If they're able to do it online, great, no problem. If they can't, they can also order by phone and I'm sure there's, there'll be volunteers able to assist if people need some assistance doing that. And then for a fee, a relatively small fee, ten, twenty percent of the order, that would cover the delivery service. And that would, and somebody would be designated, or designate themselves, to go down, pick up the orders, bring them back, either to a central distribution point or door-to-door, don't know. And that would provide some income to them. Just a couple of ideas I had. Number one, I probably want to start off with a maximum order of a hundred dollars. And the service charge would be at twenty percent, that would be a twenty-dollar charge. But that would still be a lot, bigger savings for a lot of, for a lot of items that you couldn't get here. Or, or not, or a lower charge, or whatever, whatever works, whatever would make it somebody's worthwhile. I'm thinking on the order of like a hundred dollars, maybe take a trip down to Duluth, pick up this stuff and bring it back to a central distribution point. So, that's it. I just wanted to put it out there and see if this makes any sense. I am a relative newcomer here. I married Cindy Imstall Tiffany about, a little over two years ago, so I am new to the area. As I said, certainly not here to tell you what to do, but I mean, sometimes a little out-of-the-box thinking or out of the big-box store thinking might be useful. So, let's whack in this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Ceo.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you, Frank.
Okay, consent agenda. Is there anyone else for public comment? Consent agenda, would anybody like to pull any items from the consent agenda? Motion to approve, Commissioner Gamble? Can I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Storley? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
They mixed you two up down there. Mr. Lysen?
Good morning.
Good morning, Dan.
You get the room clear out when the consent agenda's done.
So, my proposal is, Will Sands, I'm the chief deputy. Currently, he's, when he works overtime, he's being paid hour for hour. What I am requesting is that for reimbursable overtime, which is grant-funded overtime, or if we have any significant natural disasters, we're feeing him to kick in money, but that would be paid out at the time and a half rate.
You ready for discussion, Mr. Gamble?
I am ready.
Mr. Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Pat, for presenting this. And I guess my question is, why hasn't it been functioning that way? Or, how does that fit into the greater context of staffing in general? I mean, is this, I mean, it seems like normal if you're an hourly person, but...
Right, and that's, I guess that's where I'm a little confused, you know? If Will is supposed to be a salary position, or if it's an hourly position, because it's paid by the hour and anything beyond eighty is paid overtime on an hour-for-hour basis, but then I hear that he's a salaried, so that's where I'm a little, that's where it's muddy to me.
Okay, so you need clarification too. Okay.
Commissioner Storley?
Thank you. Well, I can't add more to it, other than yeah, where are we with this and is this something that's kind of an ongoing thing since you've been elected? Do you find that because of, you know, the, looking at all the personnel and the different levels and rates?
That, and the big part of it is, when Will was working the road, as I, when I was, you know, due to overtime and our opportunities to work overtime, he made a significantly higher gross wage at the end of the year than what he's making now. So, this would be a way to help him get back, he's never going to get back to the point that he was making before, just because of the chief deputy's salary is not, you know, it's not near what he made when he was working the road. Of course, he worked a lot of overtime when he worked the road, and that factored in. The opportunity to work grant-funded overtime and get reimbursed at a time-and-a-half rate would help him get back to that point where he could be financially stable again. He has, you know, and I don't want to make this sound like a big sob story, so forgive me, but he has four kids and daycare costs are killing him. Right now, he's working straight nights because the daycare costs are killing his family with the reduction in wages that he took to be chief deputy. So, this would be a way to assist him and get back to what he, you know, close to what he was before.
Well, yes, I definitely believe in, you know, good work, compensation for good work, and it seems like this would bring him up to speed. I think the description, though, of is he salaried or full-time or whatever, still kind of out there, you're not sure about, he's, who can clear it up? Then we know where to go from.
Exactly.
Okay.
You know, and I guess in my opinion, I'd have to see he's an hourly, paid hourly, if he's, if everything after eighty is getting paid at an overtime rate, which would be his rate of hour for hour. I mean, if you're salaried, you basically, you can work ninety hours in a paid period and you're not going to get compensated any more than you would if you worked seventy hours.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had a brief conversation on this yesterday, Pat, but the scope of that conversation wasn't inclusive of what we're bringing up at this point. I guess what I would say is that certainly, we've had law enforcement for a number of years and we've had those positions, and what we've done in practice in the past should define, you know, what we, what we do unless we want to revisit it. So, in a business, an organization, if we look at how we structure our staff and our wage, we would look at, do we want this person to be an exempt person? Do we want them, in other words, to be salaried, or do we want them to be on an hourly basis? So, my first question that's been raised is, is the question of what have we done in practice in this regard? I think that policy that's put in place, which we've wrestled with when we've had employees that don't like outcomes of decisions that this board or subcommittees on this board make, our assurance comes in adherence to policy. So, we should have clarification as to what our policy is relative to that position, whether it is a position that is salaried or it is hourly. The other, the other thing that I'm concerned about, and that, I'll back up and add to that, that we should determine what our policy has been in that regard relative to salaried or hourly. And many companies make decisions based upon the scope of responsibility of the position and what is normal and customary practice in a similar position elsewhere. So, if we look at other counties, Lake County, other counties, what do they do relative to, you know, this chief deputy position? And we don't necessarily have to follow, you know, suit, but it is a comparison that informs our decision. I, I think the empathy factor, which we find in a lot of things where they're negotiating union contracts, where they're talking one-on-one with an employee, we can empathize with the circumstances that say, boy, it's really difficult financially and I could use more money. I think we have to be very careful that we're not subjectively in response to such requests going outside of strict adherence to our policy. And so, that's not disrespectful, that's simply adhering to a policy that all employees can expect consistent application. So, my concern in this regard is, is that we don't really have enough background information to inform this decision, other than you as an empathetic leader responding to need and looking at the circumstances and trying to come up with a way that we might be able to remedy it. That, to me, can become problematic because it sets precedent, and at least in the context of how I understand it. So, I, I, from my standpoint, I would like to know historical perspective on this and I'd like to know, know normal and customary practice. And then, I think that we give opportunity to individuals and we explain clearly what that opportunity, what comes with that opportunity, and if it's a financial, you know, demotion, so to speak, a person has a right to say, you know, well, I appreciate the offer, I, financially, I'm better off staying in the other position. But I think there's a, there's just a lot that hasn't been answered in the broader scope of how we, you know, are consistent with policy. And Jeff can maybe, you know, speak to that.
Brady had his hand up here to be able to...
I don't have the comprehensive viewpoint, but I know there's, there's a classification, not union, but Amy Luig, for example, my office chief deputy, she was paid regular pay for over forty hours or over eighty hours, not time and a half. And I think there's some others in that class, and it might be the chief deputy too, and I don't know the history on it, but I believe there are others in that same...
Assistant county attorney? Assistant county attorney is also in that category. Frank?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jeff, could you, do you know anything about that? Do we have a classification specifically for employees that are, and they're not union, right? These are not union staff members who then get paid hourly based on, you know, beyond eighty hours every two weeks?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Frank. I know we do have that class, I know we do have exceptions for that. I've done a quick survey of our regional AMC members, and some people are doing exactly what we're doing now. Like, right now, I believe St. Louis County is on these reimbursable hours above eighty, paying straight time. So, that's what they said their current policy is. Then other people are at the same point saying, that's a slippery slope, I would really proceed with caution. I will tell you that I've had communication with several of our other department heads saying, well, if we're going to open that door, we'd like to get in that line. So, I kind of agree with what Commissioner Gamble says. We should probably send this one back down to the Personnel Committee and do some research and come up with a, have a conversation and, and then go along that route. And I completely understand why Pat is representing this, and in all honesty, I should have caught it and he and I should have said, hey, we should run this back through the committee before we bring it to the Commissioners. And that's probably what would have been the better way to handle this topic. So, that's what I would recommend, is that we put it on the agenda for the Personnel Committee meeting that's coming up in March and do some more research on it and get, have more of this conversation and have an opportunity to talk with some of our peers about, A, investigate our policy, make sure that we're adhering to that correctly, and then B, find out what latitude or options or reasons that there might be for modifying that policy.
Great, thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Madam Chair. And just a point of clarification, you did present to us, I think, minutes from the Lake County Board meeting that shows that they are in fact paying time and a half for these hours for their chief deputy, is that correct?
That's correct.
Was that Lake County?
Yeah, so, so Commissioner Gamble's point on that, that there are other counties that are doing just this, but I do agree that, that this is, this will be precedent-setting for us. So, I'm going to ask, did you come visit us at the Personnel Committee again? And I think that for us, then we could look at, you know, what are the implications for the rest of the departments? What are the financial implications? What are the, has the unions, has the union spoke up about this? I mean, that would be something that would be important to know, too. Is that, would that work for you?
Sure.
Yeah, to the, to the union on the Stone Garden Grant, the overtime hours go based on union seniority down the list. And so, being that Will's not in the union, that puts a whole nother component to it. And it's something that I think we need a much broader discussion. We have each our specialist starting, we have a top plan study starting, so it seems that the board would prefer tabling this. Commissioner Gamble?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I certainly, again, respect and empathize, I think there's, the situation as it is with employees that have requests that are coming before, they are relying on their leadership to hear them and to respond. Our responsibility is to make sure that consistency is applied and that policy is in place that ensures that we do that properly. And, and I think that, given a number of decisions that have come before the board that potentially lead to setting precedent, we just have to be very wise in how we proceed. It's not a reflection on any one individual or the work that they're doing, our ability to empathize with their situation, it's just, we want to be sure that the structure that we put in place can be consistently applied, again, regardless of the individual it applies to, and that's important. So, we appreciate the fact that you brought it to us, but I think it needs more scrutiny.
Commissioner Storley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a clarification, you indicate that there are funds budgeted and there could be some grant funds. Now, do you write the grant funds for one year, or how do you do that for funding for him and the fact that you do have some funds available?
Grant funds, the Civil Mobile Patrol and ATD Patrol, those are just coming every, we get, we get a grant every two years, it's a two-year grant. We get a Forest Service grant every year. Stone Garden Grant, this year it came in a three-year bundle, and so, you know, every year we have, we have more grant funds than, it gets to be difficult actually to spend them, so...
So, you would have money for him for the coming year? Goes by year, by year? Okay. So, I guess we need to sort some other things out.
Commissioner Moll?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And just to be clear, in and of itself, I'm supportive of the request, however, if, as you've realized now, we have other questions to answer before we can move forward, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks for bringing it forward.
If you guys would send Jeff an email if you've got specific questions, so that this can be addressed and both Gary and Frank are on the Personnel Committee, so they'll be able to take the information from Jeff and get everything answered. It's a lot to throw at Pat this morning, but I know you can answer them. So, thank you, we'll table this for later.
Thanks.
Yep. And Mr. Betts is not here, but Mr. Kennedy is, so we're going to move down to Federal Recreation Trails Program Grant. Good morning, Tim.
Good morning. Well, I think what you have in front of you is the final draft of the Federal Recreation Trails Grant for the Mountain Bike Trail that we'd like to build between Britton Peak and Luton Mountains. Hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant request with thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars of matching funds that come from twenty thousand dollars from Luton Ninety-Nine, our bike race, ten thousand dollars from Topi, Luton-Boppi Association, Forest Association, and Superior Cyclones have put up seventy-five hundred dollars. At this point, we need your approval and signature on the final application, which is due next Monday.
Okay. Commissioner Moll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tim, this is great, sounds, and I'm pretty sure, and you can comment on this, that the Forest Services already got this in the queue for their, for their NEEP request, right? So, the permitting process will be underway?
Yes, this summer, the NEEP will begin for the project area. We haven't designated where the trail is going to physically be yet, because we haven't walked the trail corridor yet, so that'll happen this spring, soon as the snow is gone. NEEP will start this summer, be completed prior to construction season, which would begin until next year, anyway.
Yeah, and for the board's knowledge, so, Tim sits on the Cook County Trail Committee with me and we're developing a comprehensive plan with Commissioner Storley. This is specifically in line with one of our number-one priorities that we'll be bringing forward to the rest of the board. Mountain biking and fat tire biking is a huge growth area for us, it hits the shoulder seasons, so extends the tourism season here, so I'd be very supportive, obviously, and this is a pretty exciting project. Thank you.
Yeah, we think so, too.
Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nothing to add, other than appreciate the, all the work that you've done, Tim, and a lot of good work gets done by people that have a passion for what they do, and that certainly has been evident, having had some of the discussions relative to allocation of dollars and visioning processes and things like that. This is good to see these things come in place and we hope it moves forward, so certainly support.
Commissioner Storley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I totally support, I'm all for it in the West End, I think it's great, and we'll continue on connecting as we need to in the future.
Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Tim. And, yes, I totally support this and really want to thank you and all the great volunteers who put in hours and hours and hours to bring great things like this to us, benefits all. And I know it's mostly done with, well, almost a hundred percent done with volunteer labor, so I really appreciate that. And we're probably getting tired of volunteers.
Thursdays.
Yeah, so, thank you, and keep it, you know, I hope we can keep it up, thanks.
Well, let's hope we can get, get the grant to be a big project and be a big asset to the West End.
Madam Chair, I will release, the Cook County Board supports the Federal Recreation Trail Grant Application for Mountain Bike Trail connecting Britton Peak to Luton Mountains.
Second. Commissioner Storley, second. Any further discussion? Brady?
Yeah, can we, there's a sample resolution in here, and I can use the, it's the same application, basically, that Sugar Bush used a few weeks ago, so maybe we could approve it as a resolution, and I'll fill it in exactly the same as...
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I amend my, my motion to say as opposed to support, support a resolution.
And application.
An application.
Ginny, are you comfortable with that? Okay, any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Forward you have it.
Mr. Betts? Thirty seconds, you missed it by. Good morning. We have not thrown anything into the agenda, added to your items today, so...
We have one item on the agenda for today. On the tenth of February, we took bids for the SAP sixteen, six oh two nineteen, which is the Saw Bell Trail paving job. This is from Britton Peak to, to Hinkin Trail for that. The bid results are detailed in my memo that's in your packet. The low bid was from Northland Constructors, Constructors LLC, an amount of two million, five hundred fifty-three thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars and ninety-four cents. The board remembers, we had a, the engineer's estimate was quite high, was higher than what we had budgeted, and we had budgeted two point nine million for this job. So, this, this bid is about seven hundred thousand, a little bit more than seven hundred thousand, under our estimate, and about three hundred and fifty thousand under our, under our budgeted amount for this project. So, with that, we recommend awarding the project to Northland Constructors LLC of Duluth, Minnesota. We recommend that the board accept the bid as submitted and subject to, an award, an award subject to completed contracts approved by the county attorney and pending receipt of permits. We are still waiting for our court permit on this, so I would prefer not to award until we actually have the permits in hand. It's formality, it's very minor, minor impacts on the wetlands, but that's my preference is to award, start to, to hold that award until we can, we have thirty days to award, so I'm going to call the court and see where we're at, and then if push comes to shove, we can award without permits, but my preference would be to have permits, so...
Okay. Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dave, this sounds great. I only have one question and it's, it relates back to the airport contract, that, I just, I can't remember what it was called, it was something where we awarded and then we had to...
Responsible bidder?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, that's all covered.
Yep, we got that, it's all part of our...
Great, thanks.
Ginny?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, the word responsible bidder, does that... Do you know anything about the work that they do?
Uh, yeah, we've worked with Northland in the past, they're one of our three contractors. We work KGM, Yolanda, and Northland mostly, on our big projects. They're, they're the big hitters in the north and above the only ones that bid. I was actually, given the size of the paving job, I was surprised we didn't pull some payers from the cities. With that, it's a, it's a pretty large paving project, so, but the big concern with them was not having recycled asphalt to use, because Northland, we do rehab, we grind up the pavement and they recycle that into the, into the matuminus, it saves some, some money, it allows them to be competitive on prices, so, but in this case, because we're paving gravel, we don't have any extra, now some of these contractors have stockpiles in the county, and so we, one of the, I know one of the big hitters in the cities chose not to because there wasn't any recycled on here, so, on that. But, you know, we're, we're confident that Northland can perform this job.
Thank you. Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dave, is, is that part of why the engineer's estimate was considerably higher than...
What's, what's that?
Is the fact that the engineer's estimate, your estimate on this project was considerably higher, seven hundred thousand, whatever...
higher, seven-hundred thousand, whatever was.
Yeah, we were part of that. The, the big, the two big, the two big ticket items on here that were, that were deviations from our estimate were mobilization. We pay a contractor to mobilize him, um, and that was, they were very competitive, and I don't remember what they were, but they were, they were small percentages of what we normally figure. We normally figure five percent on mobilization, um, and they were like, I don't know, twenty percent of that, maybe something like that. Um, so it was a very small number, they threw in for mobilization. They have the Devil Track River Bridge, um, project, so I'm guessing that's one of the reasons why. Um, uh, does the Board know that they're rebuilding the Devil Track River Bridge this year? Minnot's trying to come up and see us, but they're, the, out here, the culverts, they're gonna put, actually put a bridge in on sixty-one, so, so they got that job, so I'm guessing that's probably part of it. Um, my guess is that, that, that low of a number means they're pretty hungry for work, for mobilization, and then the big one was asphalt. Um, vituuminous prices, we estimated at, I think, fifty-seven dollars a ton, which was our price last year, um, and these came in at forty-two dollars a ton. So that's on, there's thirty-five thousand and change, uh, ton of asphalt on this job, so, um, that's a pretty big number, um, if we would've had, well, they do have, they, they do have a source for recycled, so, on here, so, um, they actually have a, they actually have a source, I think they're gonna use the, the leftover asphalt from, uh, the seven job lot through, two years ago, or three years ago, so, um, so anyway, so, uh, that, those are the two big, the two big numbers, and the two big changes for, for, on that, on this project.
Thank you.
Commissioner Moll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so, uh, Dave, where does the, um, I mean, obviously, County Board, our eyes open up, you know, there's, we're under budget a good bit, there's a chunk of money here, does, what would the, um, what would that money, three, three hundred, approximately a thousand dollars, where would that go?
Well, it'll stay in our state aid account, um, and one of the things I'm thinking about is, is, is either pushing the project just a little farther, trying to get a little more pavement, 'cause this is not, Honey Moon Trail is not our ultimate goal, uh, and we talked about this at, when we, when we did the job. Um, and then also, we've got some, we've got some big projects that are not in the capital plan yet, because we don't have funding for them. What the big one is, is, um, the Casaf Five Bridge, um, which we've got some preliminary numbers on, that's gonna probably be about a five-hundred-and-eighty, six-hundred-thousand-dollar bridge. We'll get bridge bonding for it, but because it's on state aid route, state aid only cover fifty percent of the other, or, uh, the bridge bonding, well, usually only covers fifty percent of the eligible costs, and then there's ineligible costs that would come from state aid, too. So that, this number would probably cover pretty close to what we're gonna probably need to do on the, on the, um, on the Five Bridge. Um, that's probably where I'm kinda leaning towards saving most of that, is just leaving it in the bank, and, once we get, uh, once we get plans done and get bonding done, then we can, uh, we'll have the money in the bank waiting to, waiting to pay for that bridge.
Again, essentially, Dave, then this will move up the, of the projects in the queue, you know, that.
Is, this isn't enough to move a project up, um, to, in a queue.
I mean, just of what our priorities are, so, I mean, we're obviously, we don't have the money to fund all of our priorities state aid.
Right.
Or anything else, you know, so, by directing approximately three-hundred thousand dollars to those projects, I mean, it's just gonna make the rest of them, including those in the east end of the county, you get more good again.
It takes some of the pressure off, um, because we're, you know, I like to have money in our state aid account for unexpecteds, um, and, but on the other hand, I also don't like having a lot, and we can't, we get penalized if we have too much in our bank accounts, so, um, so we, in other words, they, they want us to be spending it, so we can't have more than two years allotment in our account, otherwise we get penalized for that. So, um, in this case, we're.
Spending.
Yeah, we're spending, and we're, we're down to it. My, my cash flow for, my cash flow for state aid was, um, this project was gonna actually put us in the red, in this, in a, in our state aid account, um, not by very much, by twenty, thirty, forty thousand was my projection, and this'll definitely keep us in the black on ours, on our state aid, so, it wasn't a concern at all. We typically, like, we haven't made our final payment on the twelve job yet, so, um, for last year's job, usually, usually something comes up that we can't, can't do it in the year that it's constructed, so, so that final payment is, it's just a cash flow thing, more than anything, so, um, so, yeah, so in this case, we'll, we're, I've got, the, the pressure is off on, um, on our account now, so we'll, we've got a little bit of play for overages or, or a project that comes up that's a surprise that we have to do or something like that, so.
I know you like the color red, Dave, but I never say in the red. When I do accounting, I say in the pink, just 'cause it sounds better. So I will make a motion to approve the project award pending county attorney review and permitting approval. Can I get a second? Commissioner Campbell? Any further discussion? Commissioner Campbell?
Madam Chair, we might wanna include in that, um, motion, the contractor selected, which is Northland.
Yep. I, I will include Northland Contractors to be approved. You support that?
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Dave.
Um, just, just a comment, I'd like to thank, um, Dave and Highway Department for coming up with a solution to remove the culverts at, on North Road, uh, at, uh, the Fluree River Crossing there. Um, it's, uh, you focused on it, and you got it done, and, um, I really appreciate that, and, and.
Is it done?
Yeah, there's one little toe piece left, I think, and that's it, and they found a, a staff person who wanted them. Uh, we were able to use county equipment to move them, um, which was available, as opposed to us having to impact the budget more directly, yeah, so, um, that's a nice piece of property that now the, uh, community can come up with a plan to see what they wanna do with it now.
Yeah, the, the staff member that wanted was, like, a quarter mile down the road, so he just drug it home on the ice, so, on the road, so that was, the nice thing was, is that it could be, just drug on the ice and went really fast, so.
And not just left on the ice to melt.
Yeah, no, it went, he drug it home to ice on the road and drug it home and drug it into his house, so.
And Dave, is there any, um, I know Frank wants to use it for the community, but are there any restrictions on that property, being it's Highway Department property?
Well, yeah, I mean, usually, you're gonna, you're gonna wanna look at it, we look at it as, I mean, that's our former garage, so we, we look at it, protect it like it's ours, um, and things like that, so, and certainly we'd have, you know, certainly we control access to it, because that's in the Highway Department's purview on that.
Diane has insurance to have community members on the community center property, does the Highway Department have that same?
No, no, we don't carry any insurance for anybody other than ourselves to be on the property.
Okay.
Yeah, and to be clear, obviously, any, anything that would go forward, you know, we would, you would be involved in discussions, and, um, and to my knowledge, you don't have, you don't have a planned use for that property.
I do not have.
Yeah, so, um, we would discuss that, and you'd be a part of that discussion, obviously, and hopefully, um, approve whatever community would want to do with it, so, thank you.
Yep. Um, just a quick update to dovetail a little bit into that bridge discussion, just a really quick, just so that the Board knows what we're doing. Um, we're gonna, we're gonna, I'm working on an RFP right now, uh, for our bridges. We have about, uh, oh, I think we have fifteen structurally deficient bridges on our, on our system, um, and three of them we're working on right now, um, but the remaining were, and we have, uh, two functionally obsolete bridges, um, and, so we're working on, uh, working with a consultant, we're trying to hire a consultant to do a planning document for us. In other words, go out, so many of our bridges, almost, almost every one except one is actually a culvert, so, um, you know, and the question is, is, you know, whether or not we're gonna be doing, uh, whether or not those new bridges are good bridge, because there's opening requirements now that weren't part of when we, when these were put in and things like that, so, just kinda go, go, basically, the, the scope is gonna be, go out and look at it, take a look at the waterway opening, maybe do some preliminary hydrology, just and get an idea where the, what the new structure would be, um, ballparky, and then, and then give us costs, which is the big thing for us, is so that we can get a better financial plan for replacing our bridges, 'cause we've, we've got, it's a fair, fair percentage that, that need to be replaced right now, so, um, you know, we have fifty-eight, fifty-eight open bridges, um, bridges that are open, and, and that is, and just so that everybody knows, um, and if the paper's here, so that, they're not, structurally deficient does not necessarily mean they're gonna collapse. It just means that they are structural.
Didn't make it any clearer, not necessarily.
Well, I mean, a struc, I mean, we've got, we've got one structurally deficient bridge that we actually have closed, um, and it's not open, um, but some of them are, almost all of these are not in risk of collapsing.
If you were at risk, you would change weight restrictions and be proactive.
Right, and we would, and ultimately, they would be closed, so, just so that the public doesn't get, they get, I learned that, we learned this lesson a lot with the, the thirty-five E, thirty-five W bridge, where they kept saying structurally deficient, structurally deficient, it doesn't, just because it's structurally deficient does not mean it's gonna collapse. In that case, it actually meant that it was gonna collapse, um, but, but in, it is clear.
Dave, you're digging a hole.
In our case, in our case, we just, we don't have bridges that are, that are ready to collapse, um, we have some pretty low-rated bridges, and we're working on, those are the ones that are in our, that are in our, uh, queue right now, in design queue right now, and, um, you know, it just means, a structurally deficient bridge could mean that, uh, for instance, um, you know, there's a, there's a, some rust on the, some significant rust on, on one of the members, or something like that.
Cross River has the one timber that's.
Right, exactly, so, um, you know, and there, there could be all sorts of things, you know, little rot on, you got rot on, um, on a wood structure, um, so it's just, it's just one of those things. We go through and we rate it on, I don't know how many different categories, there's dozens of categories that we rate, we rate each individual member and things like that. That all gets gone into a, a database, and, and spits out a, spits out a, a, a bridge rating number, one to a hundred, and, um, and so if you're, if you fall down below about a sixty, then you're, then you're, uh, seventy, sixty to seventy, depending upon what's wrong with the bridge, it, it becomes what's called structurally deficient. In other words, something needs to change on the bridge, whether you need to make a repair, or whether you need to actually replace a member, or whether you need to actually replace the bridge, so, anyway, so, just so that we don't have panic. But, if it's on the list, it's important that it get, that they get dealt with, so, and that's, and that's really where we're going with it, so.
Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dave, I know we have an aversion to science, but you might wanna put that numerical rating on the beginning of each bridge, so, people can choose. I, I remember years ago, when we were on a family vacation, and we came to a bridge where we actually had to align the tumors to match where our wheels were in order to get across, and, uh.
Yeah, we don't have any of those, fortunately, um, but, you know, we've got some, we've got some restricted bridges and, that are causing some issues, and, and we've got, uh, you know, we've got some, you know, the Five Bridge is a good example, you know, it gets downgraded by alignment, too, so, some of that is, is not necessarily the bridge, but what happens before and after the bridge. Um, it, it, it gets downgraded, if we don't have proper guardrail on the bridge, it gets downgraded, um, and, um, all, all that goes into that, that bridge rating, um, like Five, the Five Bridge, it's got curve coming into it, so that's a little bit of deficiency in it, and then it's also got, it's also got some broken-out boards, it's got a board retaining wall, um, for the abutment, and those, we've got some broken-out boards, so that could, while that's not, that's not risking the bridge to collapse, it lowers the ratings significantly, so, um, so that's kinda one of those things, so it's, it all goes to the integrity of the bridge, is really what we should call it, is, is it's, it's in, it's integrity is, is not quite where, where we need it to be, so.
Thank you, Dave.
So, yeah, so, um, I think that's everything else. The Board's got something else for me?
Trying not to.
Thank you. Thank you.
Tim?
Oh, um, really quickly, Heidi, um, the, we're holding back that award. You, remember, you signed the award.
Yep.
So we'll, as soon as we have that stuff, we'll send that over, so, bringing my colleagues to do a quick.
Not a problem. Thank you.
The first thing, should we wait for Commissioner?
Mr. Moll? Go ahead, Tim.
Okay. Um, uh, thank you. The first thing I wanted to do is just, uh, provide a little, uh, clarification for some of the questions that have come up with regards to how maybe the county handles commercial activity outside of the city limits, like of, uh, Grand Marais and our, and our activities. What I handed out to you, um, is, is language. Uh, I'll start first with what is referred to as the two-mile jurisdictional boundaries, and, um, what you have is, the, the concept actually comes from Minnesota Statute four sixty-two. Four sixty-two is the enabling statute for cities in their, uh, land use activities and such. Minnesota Statute three ninety-four governs counties. Uh, in four seventy-two, uh, I provided two provisions in here, um, the first of which talks about, uh, the subdivision, uh, and that's where the city of Grand Marais actually has exerted, uh, their, their jurisdictional or extraterritorial jurisdictional rights. They can, cities can extend, uh, their authority to control subdivision, uh, beyond, two miles beyond, uh, their city limits, uh, provided that it's not into, uh, any other incorporated municipality or township, um, and, uh, Grand Marais has, has chosen, cho, chosen to do so, uh, but what that means is that they, all the, all of the subdivision that, that takes place, they are to review and, uh, approve all the subdivisions that go into place. The next, uh, provision is four sixty-two, three fifty-seven, which allows cities to go ahead and extend zoning authority for two miles, uh, also, but they cannot extend it into any town or county that has, uh, already has, uh, zoning authority, so, because we have a zoning ordinance in place, and we do zoning, then, the, the two miles for the city is only for, for subdivision purposes, uh, in Cook County, and Cook County then controls all of the zoning activity that's outside of the city and within that two-mile, uh, zone mark. So just to, to clear that, uh, portion up, the back page of what I handed to you is a, a listing of the general commercial zone districts, which applies to, um, all of the general, uh, commercial activity, which lies outside of the city of Grand Marais, either whether it's inside the, the two miles or outside of the two miles, all of, uh, the, the commercial, general commercial activity adheres to these. When it talks about permitted uses, these are all uses that are just established and allowed by permit, um, it's, to explain permit a little bit, we actually only issue, we don't issue building permits, we issue land use permits, and so, uh, we don't issue permits for the use of the structure, we issue permits for the construction of a structure, and so, uh, for example, the former Howling Wolf, uh, building, Gunners, now Odds and Ends, they've not had to receive any permits for the change of the use of the store, to the restaurant, to the, whatever, um, now, if they were to tear it down, or expand, or do something else, then that would require a permit. So I just wanted to clear that up, that all of these particular uses that are listed in here are just uses that can occur, uh, in any existing, uh, structure, but, uh, any new permits or any new structures that would go on a property would require a permit, and that's where we would be, become involved. And so, that's just a brief, uh, description, at least, of the questions that, that I've heard and received in, and I guess I will open it up if, if you guys have any other questions from you.
Commissioner Moll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, so, the, obviously, the topic on the table is Dollar General, that's why this is, um, is what you're clarifying for us, which we appreciate, 'cause many of our constituents are contacting us, wondering, wondering what the county's position would be. Um, so if somebody were to present a application, and say a Dollar General or some like store were to come and say, uh, we would like to build this, uh, store along sixty-one, on county property outside of the city limits, um, based on our zone, our zoning ordinance, that would be a permitted use, correct?
That is absolutely correct. If, if you go down the, the, the uses, we have hotels, motels, resorts, we have, um, there's motor vehicles, a car lot, I mean, there's, there's all sorts of things that could occur in that, uh, in that area, and that's why I didn't specifically tie it to any one particular. And that's why I didn't specifically tie it to any one particular entity, because it's, if any entity, any commercial activity is afforded the same allowance in that zone district.
Provided they meet our side ordinance and...
That is correct, yes.
And other specifications we have. Great, thank you.
Mr. Gamble?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Tim. I appreciate the, the proactive response to the questions that get raised, because having, you know, been at the public meeting that was held at the city council, there's a lot of assumptions, I shouldn't say a lot, but there were some assumptions being made, and certainly people that have a position on this would like to see that all regulatory agencies share their position. And in my previous experience, when you have, you know, local residents that would like to see certain entities not be part of their community, they would like to see rules put in place for those, you know, to keep those entities out. And back to, you know, many discussions we've had at a board, it is a, setting up a structure in which we allow equal application to any entity to be able to develop what they want to do. So, in other words, if, if we had somebody that wanted to come in and, and subdivide, the ordinances that we have in place, the restrictions that we have in place would apply to anybody as to how that happens. I think the importance in the clarification that's brought in this is, is to underscore that policies and ordinances are equally applied. They are established by the governing body, once they're in place, based upon informed decisions, it's equally applied. We can't subjectively determine when we apply it in one case and not in another. And I think that's where we run into this sticky wicket, where if, if public perception is all we have to do is be against something, we can't be against something if, if the provision of law allows it. We need to go back and look at our ordinances and things if we want to be more restrictive, but we cannot subjectively interpret based upon where we might be on an issue. And that's why I think it's very important that the clarity comes, you know, to define this. So, just like we visited relative to law enforcement this morning, we need, we need to understand the structure that defines how we respond to things that come before us. And so, appreciate, again, the information.
Mr. Storley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Right, the information is great. And I believe that the city council has, right now, put a moratorium on anything over 5,000 square feet. And so, when somebody would come to the county for land use, there's no restrictions as to what size they're gonna build, if it's...
Madam Chair, Commissioner Storley, that, that is correct. We really don't have, except for some of the other inherent type restrictions, such as impervious surface over the total size of a, of a lot. We do have that restriction in place. And just to kind of throw out a few comparisons, the, the old Howling Wolf, now Odds and Ends is approximately 7,000 square feet. And, what was it, Superior Lumber, I believe, just the main building in and of itself, is about 11,000 square feet. So, we do have much larger buildings already that are in place.
Right, thank you.
Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so, just to clarify, because the, I think the area that we're talking about is this two-mile area. It's not in the city. It's outside of the city, and so it's in that two-mile. County has zoning, and the city has subdivision. Is that, is that right?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Severson, that, that is correct. For, for any of this, we do have a general commercial zone district that runs in different areas all along the, the North Shore. But, for the immediate area surrounding Grand Marais, yes, there is, what we would be regulating with regards to zoning would be that area that is outside of the actual incorporated city limits of Grand Marais. But, within the, the two-mile area, the two-mile jurisdictional thing.
So, my other question, so the city has a moratorium for over 5,000 square feet, but that stops at the city limits?
That is correct. That has no impact over the county.
So, and evidently, that line, as I asked you yesterday, is, is not a straight line, so it's kind of hard to know exactly where it is. But, so the, the property in question is that, obviously, it's in the city limits?
The, the property in question that the city is dealing with is, is inside the incorporated city limits of Grand Marais, yes.
It's kind of on the edge.
It's, it's close to the edge.
Yeah, close to the edge. Okay, I think that answers my questions.
So, the discussion was brought to the Cook County Planning and Zoning Commission on this, because the city took action and has a moratorium in effect. Our Planning and Zoning Commission took no action. So, it is the will of this board, if this board chooses to take action. And that is part of why I asked him to bring it forward at this point. At this point, if Dollar General or any other company is looking to bring a business to Cook County, if they're less than 5,000 square feet, they will have the permitting within the city, or they may choose to go outside of the city in order to build. There is no permit applied for at this point, for anywhere in the county, for a facility of any specific size or any specific company.
Jan?
So, my next question would be, so, in order to, if we really wanted to follow suit with the city, I'm not saying that we would, because I think there are huge consequences, because we're, you know, we can't limit it, we couldn't limit it to, say, two miles out from the city limits. We, we would have to say for the whole county, if we were to do a moratorium, we would have to say for the whole county, no buildings could be done over 5,000 square feet. I mean, we wouldn't have to say those words, but I mean, if we were to follow suit, we would have to, that's how we would have to do it. And that would have enormous consequences, I think, bigger than the city's consequences dealing with this issue.
Yeah.
Which is why we're taking it so seriously and talking about it.
Well, and I wanted it brought here first, so we don't have the same reaction as the city had. I want this board and our planning and zoning to understand the board's position moving forward, because there may be a point where 100 people show up here for public comment. And we do make decisions knee-jerk and reactively to feeling and emotion, but I want us to have the opportunity to understand our regulations and our zoning, and for this board to be set in its action, so that when we do get phone calls, we don't have to turn every one of them over to Tim, but you should, because he understands it better than we do, but that we all are on the same position. At this point, the county supports our current regulations. Commissioner Gamble?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank you, too, for just the awareness of the importance of addressing it and bringing it before us, and asking Tim to do that. And I, I think, we, I couldn't agree more that we don't want to be reactionary. Reactionary often does involve more emotion than it does fact. And the question that we as commissioners would ask to our department head, in this case, Tim with planning and zoning, is, is, you know, what defined our, our present existing policy? And if we feel that the, the rationale that defined that is still consistent with our values, then, then we need to support that. And, and I, that's why I think it's very important that that foundation is revisited, so that, moving forward, we have a position as opposed to emotional response. And I, and I think that, probably one of the most difficult things for me is, is the, the conflict between our bemoaning economic development and opportunity, and then, when it comes, bemoaning the fact that it's here, and it's not what we're, it's changed that we don't recognize. And so, it's, that's not specific to the Dollar General store, it's just a generic statement relative to economic opportunity. I did, yesterday, NACO had a webinar session that you could attend, that was Special Governor's Roundtable, State and County Collaboration to Tackle Chronic Rural Poverty. And very interesting, the comments, and again, a lot of them, we're, we're in conflict, is where we need to be. And when we, when we discover conflict, then we need to respond to it in a way that puts a structure in place that tries to manage those two sides. And so, I appreciate the information, I appreciate your initiative, and...
So, every, Commissioner Severson? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I just want to say that, that this is not, I don't think this is coming from a black and white place for anybody. And I think even people who support economic development are absolutely not supporting the development of this store.
I support economic development, and I support this store coming.
Yes. I mean, some people are, you know, black or white on that issue, but I think, I'm not. I don't see economic development that black and white. I see, I see the way, well, Grand Marais in particular has developed, and, and we have not, we've dodged all these bullets, and I see that this bullet, this one bullet, could change us forever, and it wouldn't, it could possibly end, from what I heard from that meeting, and what I feel instinctly, it would not be a good thing. So, I, you know, I come from that place, and I, I want to support, you know, the people of Grand Marais, and, but I also understand the complexity of the issue, and you can't, it's really hard to choose, and we can't choose, basically. That's not our, our role, is to not choose, but I wish there, I wish we could.
I agree. It's, it's not an easy decision, and just to say I support it doesn't, is not an easy thing to say either. I'm sure my answering machine will be blown to pieces within an hour. But, there's goods and positives to any type of business that comes in, and so...
It doesn't have really many goods.
You know, we had a Montgomery Ward's and a Sears, and we don't now. So, we evolve, we change, and, and we hope for the best, and so, we do need economic development. Anything else for Tim, and anyone needs any clarity?
Come, Madam Chair, thank you. Were agreement on this?
I thought.
And, and a point that I want to bring up, we do have, we do have county ordinances that are state-informed also, protecting water quality, protecting, protecting the things that we're supposed to. However, we also, as a board, and I think as a county, have an obligation to protect private property rights. And if people do have goals for their property and, and business, that, that they should have some determination in that, not us picking and choosing what that's gonna be. So, anyway, again, I appreciate you bringing this over, Tim.
That's the sad side of it, is you've got a business that's no longer operating, and people that want to sell that land, and, and choices made have affected whether or not that family can recoup their property. So, it's not easy, Jan, it's, it's tough from every angle.
There are a lot of businesses that would face enormous vulnerabilities.
Yeah, thank you. Tim, we don't want to take, Commissioner Gamble?
Yeah, and just, you know, to that point, the broader issue that we've discussed as a board, that, you know, known that loss in, in tax revenue. And so, counties are wrestling with this and saying, "Well, we need to pass a resolution that says that we won't, we won't allow any property, you know, to go off the tax floor." We don't, we don't, we might think we have that authority, but we really don't in the broader sense. If we're gonna protect individual property rights and freedoms, we can't, we can't limit what a person does with their property outside of that, that scope of, you know, options that they have. So, what we can do is, we can say intent, and hope that people share that value, and whether we're dealing with the DNR and land exchange or other things, that we need to understand, we cannot lose tax base, but, but that greater good that we seek to achieve in keeping tax revenue cannot compromise an individual's personal property right to sell their land.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the board for your thoughtful discussion on this. Mr. Demmer, we've got 25 minutes. We have a public hearing, so don't rush, because we can go to the public hearing and come back to you.
Yeah. Yeah, I think I will.
Make sure you can get her started.
I can cooperate as well, though. Don't need to turn a little bit?
I just need to go there.
Sometimes I gotta take a few.
I'm not, I'm not really taking the airport there, opposite end, so I can probably talk.
I feel terrible.
I'm sorry.
Well, yeah.
So, it's right.
Demmer, please, yeah, you back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
There are also people that qualify as well compared to taxes.
Tax revenues.
Yep. All right. So, David is having technical difficulties. So, Rowan, our administrator left us, too. We're having difficulties all over the place. So, let's go to Commissioner Reports, Meetings to Note, and Meeting Updates. Oh, and Jan Severson left us, too. We're already just evacuated.
I might want to take the camera out in the hall.
Anybody have, tell us about donkey basketball, Frank.
So, donkey basketball. So, I was at, I, if anybody was at the donkey basketball, it was a great experience, raised some money for the band, but I had this donkey that wouldn't move.
I think they set that up on purpose.
They did, and they did. And so, I asked the guy at the halftime, and I'm, if you were seeing, I'm trying to drag my donkey, talk to it, and I said, "So, what's the story with this donkey? How can I get this donkey to move?" And he said, "No, that donkey's trained to not move."
Okay, great.
They had donkeys, yeah, they had donkeys set for specific tasks.
So, they go, "Let's give that guy the one that goes nowhere."
Commissioner Severson, we are doing Commissioner Reports, Meetings to Note, and Meeting Updates, because Jeff's not here, and we're having technical difficulties.
Okay, I've got a lot of things to report on.
Okay, Commissioner Gamble?
I have to go. I cannot do the WTIP interview tomorrow, can somebody trade with me?
And we have a luncheon tomorrow, and almost everybody is out of town for the luncheon. Commissioner Gamble, if you can't do it, I can do it.
I can, I can.
Commissioner Gamble? Okay, thank you, we'll change that.
Can I have one more? Um, yep, just because, you know, some are here right now. Um, the, there's, there's a commission that I'm on, and it's the Northeast Radio, I'm looking for the committee list, and, and I can't get that either, and I think there's an important vote coming up, and there is no alternate. Or the alternate was Sheriff Fall. And it's the...
When is that meeting?
It's on Thursday, and it can be done here from a video.
Thursday, at what time?
Thursday at 10 o'clock. And I can get whoever, yeah, Thursday at 10 o'clock.
If Fall was the alternate, Sheriff Eliason should be the alternate?
Right, that's right.
Jeff, can you get ahold of Eliason to do the Northeast Radio? You and Jan get together and see if Pat can do it, and if not, we'll see if another commissioner can step in, or maybe Jeff could step in?
Yeah, Rowan is the person who is the steward on that, he's on the...
Yeah, should be brought up to speed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Should have that changed, that it's Pat.
Yep. Great.
Still on, Commissioner?
Yep, go ahead.
Meetings to note, Commissioner concerned. So, the Cook County Kaepernick Trails Plan has been meeting, as I've been reporting to you all, Commissioner Storley, and I sit on that. Second draft of that plan is done, and it's a pretty, very comprehensive project that Dave has been, been spearheading, and doing really good work on that.
So, second draft is not final draft?
Is not the final draft. So, this will be going out for public comment. And, and so that will be posted, Dave, when will that be available for review by the public?
Next Mon, or next Friday.
Next Friday. And then we will have a, we will also have a public comment meeting, and that will be here on March 7th at 7:00 PM. So, the, the public can come forward and, and speak to that, that committee also. Just a really comprehensive effort, where Superior National Forest, the DNR, Grand Portage, all of the trail user groups have been working together on this. I think it's a really exciting opportunity for us. So, anyway, I look forward to getting public comment, if anybody's watching here. Again, this is our best effort to this point, but we need to hear from everybody how we're doing. You know, if this, we hit it right, do we miss something? And so, it's important that we get public comment on, on this draft.
Jan?
So, just a question, Commissioner Moe, so to get the information prepared for that, do you have somebody to comment? Is that available?
Next Friday.
Yeah, so next Friday will be available on the Planning and Zoning, your website, David. You'll have, maybe all the...
Um, so just a question, Commissioner Mo, so to get the information prepared for that, do you have somebody to comment? Is that available?
Next Friday.
Yeah, so next Friday will be available on the Planning and Zoning, your website, David. You'll have, David, you'll have a link to that on the Planning and Zoning website for the trail plan, correct?
Uh, yeah, we'll have it on our main page too, on Cook County's main page.
On Cook County's main page. So it'll be available so we can, you can download it. It's a pretty comprehensive document. And then, and then again, public hearing here on the.
7th at 7:00. That was nice.
Dave, I see that you totally broke it.
I don't even have a machine anymore.
Yeah. Do you want to wing it or what are you?
I think he's just going to transfer that PowerPoint over to another machine.
Okay.
Do it then.
Yeah, as I mentioned, I, um, NACO had sent out an announcement that Governor's Roundtable on State and County Collaboration to Tackle Chronic Rural Poverty. And, um, they had Governor from Tennessee, Governor from Virginia, Utah and Pennsylvania, who were on the panel along with the USDA, Department of Agriculture. And some of the comments, one thing is, um, the first thing, this is Gary Herbert, who is the Governor of Utah, says, the first thing we can do to help live people out of poverty is to help people get a job. 21.7% of children are in poverty today. We need to address the family in the context of situational and intergenerational poverty. Situational poverty is some event in your life that just takes place and puts you in a situation that contributes to poverty. Poverty of the other is the intergenerational, which is, it's repeated generation after generation that we just become accustomed to poverty and we don't get out of that cycle. So his, uh, he says, we need to institute healthy habits. If you want to avoid poverty, get a good education, get a job, get married, have children, and do it in that order and you will have a better chance to avoid.
Well, no one's going to call me today if it's not on you.
I missed that. Could you go through that?
No, no.
You want to check and find out? It's very interesting if you want to look at.
There's a gal in our community that did a video on poverty that's pretty close to those key points there, so.
So here's the other, the other question I think, and maybe the tech, technology will be back in place is, what are the barriers to small business development? And, uh, these are various quotes from the various governors. We do not spend enough time focusing on the issue. We need to have a healthy infrastructure. We need to make the place better, not just the people. If we make people better without making the place better, better people will move elsewhere. And another is, one of the problems in rural areas is that ideas are entrenched. And another one is, come to our community. The citizens are the welcoming mat to business and economic growth. And then Tom Bilzak, who's Secretary of US Department of Agriculture, says, encourage county officials to become more aware of services provided by the USDA. We are very interested in helping rural America. I think that's something we may be able to look at to see if, if there's any funding sources or anything else we might be able to do to help us in this area of, of poverty. And of course, the demographic study that was done relative to the Dollar General store was one that focused on this issue. And so again, if anybody needs a copy of that list in order, I'll have it monogrammed for you. I'll write that down.
Well, you know, I sat down with Tom Boggs last week and talked about some issues in our community, working on the housing project and, um, and says, first we got to help ourselves. Is the main point. And so he's willing to come back up and talk to us and I've talked to Rob Eklund. And so he does support our housing initiatives and will help us out and Judy will help us out. And, um, it was a good conversation.
Good.
And I think that leads us right up. We actually have a screen. Don't jinx it. Well, you're not allowed to have weapons in the corner.
All right, Kurt.
Thanks, Kurt.
There'll be a chocolate in my room.
All right, Dave. Rock and roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioners, um, I had it working this morning, I'm sorry.
I know, I saw it.
Yeah, right. Um, so, you know, Tim and I are talking, you know, we have, uh, at this point, a lot of data from planning zoning records. Uh, we have complete land use permits records back to 1979. And, you know, since, um, about 2009, we've been compiling a little bit more specific data that's tailored to the annual reports that you guys get every year. In your board packet, I believe there's a, our actual hard copy of the Planning, Zoning Annual Report. That report is going to be, um, that's in tabular form mainly, so it's kind of hard to digest. So, um, what we've been doing is we've been actually going ahead and trying to grasp some of these permits. And we're starting to see trends that, um, you know, we believe is informative. It gives you an insight to where the local economy is going, especially in the building trades, um, as well as where just activities are in general, what kind of projects are happening, what kind of projects are decreasing, what kind of projects are increasing. And, uh, kind of what that means, not just for the local economy, but also for our systems as well and our departments and our programs that we, that we're running. So, um, I'm going to just run through some graphs mainly. There are tables here. That's all the tables you have on your, on your, in your board packets. Those are more the details. What I really want to do is paint an overview of where these trends are going. Most of this data is from 2009 to current, or I should say to 2015. And some of the, some of the permit types just weren't even around in 2009. For example, the interim use permit, so you'll see that showing up in 2011. So I'm going to zip through this. Um, I understand you guys have a public meeting here coming up. Feel free to just chime in with any questions as we go. So this is just the table, the overview. This is the first thing I always see in the report. I understand you probably can't read all the details here. I think the big takeaway from this one is that the high-volume permits, i.e. the land use permits and the septic permits, the big volume, uh, they're, you know, over half of our total permit load as far as numbers go, are relatively unchanged. And that's basically true since the recession. You see plus or minus 5%. Um, as far as numbers, we're talking land use permits. Last year was 144 and septic permits is 132. Also, uh, things that we keep track of is our permit fees, including after the fact for enforcement. And those are follow on that table on the far right and then are totaled on the bottom. There was a decrease in fees and we could talk a little bit about that last year. But everything else, especially the high-volume permits, are, are pretty much what I call a new norm since the recession.
Dave, there's a lot of, um, interior remodeling, which doesn't require a permit.
That's correct.
So I know the contractors have been busy and Jordy did have to get permits for like his last seven jobs. So he's not a good example to use, but there's a lot of people that are, are moving their interior out of the 70s, 40s, but we don't have that information on our graphics, yeah, so.
Ma'am Chair, you're, you're correct in that our land use permits are only queued up when there's an ex, or alteration to the exterior dimensions or a new build. And even then, there's exemptions for new builds. So not all, you know, not all building activity is going to be captured in our permitting.
And is this also stagnant because there's only 8% of land available to build on?
Ma'am Chair, I, I, that's definitely a tough question.
Subjective conclusion.
We don't have that data captured, if that's what.
Okay.
But, um, Dave, could you, you have off the top of your head, like, okay, 144 last year. And I realize that we're going back to the five-year averages and you've got all the pluses and minuses. But pre-2008, those numbers, how did they compare to today's numbers?
Well, uh, thank, uh, Madam Chair, Commissioner Severson, there were, um, in, after the Ham Lake fire, for example, the permits spiked over 200 with the permits that were issued. I, I think if you look at the, the trend from 1979 that we have data for, you see a lot of this going up and down. But if you look at that, if you average that out with the trend line, the permit load is increasing, but very slightly. I mean, a very small slope. I don't have that graph represented here. But we are still seeing an increase in the number of permits, but it's very slight, even with those spikes that you had during some of the, some of the big building years.
Mr. Allison?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Severson, too. It, it is really interesting following that, the trends as far as the economy goes, we had a bit of a recession around the 2000 timeframe. And then that housing boom, uh, we experienced a lot of subdivision and a lot of permit load right in the 2005, 6, 7, up to the 8 timeframe before it really tanked. So it, it did kind of follow what I would say, the kind of the national trend line. But we did have a really substantial increase during that bubble, so to speak.
Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dave, if you have records from 1979, maybe just, you know, if we were to ask the question, in that time period, which year had the most permits? And when you look at that, what was existing at that point that might define that number?
Uh, yeah, thanks. A good question. Um, thanks, Madam Chair. They, um, I think 2007 is going to be your biggest volume year. And like I said, that had a lot to do with the fire. And, um, I think that there were a couple other years leading, uh, or leading up to that that were flirting with the 200 land use permits issued at your mark. But by far, that was the single biggest volume year.
Yeah, and in part, your insurance gives you like only six-month window to go through the process, which we found after the last fire, there was a couple people that missed their deadlines, so.
So, um, this is land use permits in terms of values. You know, we report this. This is when you hear building stats from the Department of Commerce, for example. The big things that they're looking for is number of permits issued, um, the footage, and then their big one is the values. And that's what you hear people talking about when they're throwing around the building values. These are what people are estimating, um, at the time of submitting the permit. So of course, as we all know, there's a lot of variables that go into that, including, um, some, the misnomer that that number that you put down reflects your tax, the tax property value too. So this, I know this is depressed, um, but either way, what you could take out of this is you could see that we continue to, even though we're only having, you know, 4% increase in permit numbers, you can see that the actual project value is still increasing. I don't know how that would play out if you teased out inflation and, and, you know, other, other, our other market forces. But that there is a takeaway that we're putting $4 million of buildings onto the, into the county, basically every year. Well, we did in 2015 at least, so.
Commissioner Gamble?
Dave, you, you addressed it relative to inflation, but, um, when we look at, we could have a static number as to permits applied for, but we can see an increased value in those permits. And to the extent that it's, it's intangible, uh, value as opposed to consumed by increased prices, that, that distinction should be made. And that's a hard thing. I mean, you could run your numbers based upon what we know inflation is, but we, we can look in other departments where we see the number served is static, but our cost for service has increased significantly. And we need to understand why that is. So anyway.
We also take a look at, and these are tables right over your, right under packet, where we're issuing a permit. The table on the left there is the types of structures. The big one up top is the homes and cabins. Those are our new builds. Those are what we are reporting to Department of Commerce. Everything going down then is residential accessory buildings. And then we also have some commercial. Here I would like to highlight actually the commercial new construction. Five is the largest number that I've ever reported for an annual report since I began this work. A lot of that has to do with the Lutzen projects. And, you know, so just knowing that, 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 that's, that is a big number. Five commercial new builds is, is very, it's great to see. The, uh, one table on the right is the zone districts. Uh, to me, there's no surprises there. Our big zone districts that we see the projects in are the far three. So the, that's the five acre minimums that we tend to see around the nodes, the major nodal development areas, like Grand Marais. Also, the LSR, Lakeshore Residential and R1. Lakeshore Residential is a zone district around all the inland lakes. That had 38. That was the highest by number of, of projects. As well as the R1 Zone District, which is essentially the Highway 621 corridor on Lake Superior. So those three areas, um, generally across the county are where we're seeing the activity. And this is pretty, pretty typical, very typical. Again, we report, not just to you guys, but the DNR as well. And the DNR's, um, reporting is focused on shoreline statistics. On the table on the left is the permits issued in North Shore Management Zone. So along, basically the 61 corridor. That's a corridor of our permits that we issue. Other shoreline areas, though, is nearly 40%. For a subtotal of over 63, or 63% of our total permits are issued in shoreline. And as you guys know, there's implications there such as septic and, and stormwater and other water quality related things that come up when we're talking about shoreline. So that, that's a large percent, 60-plus percent. Again, it's pretty typical too. A lot of our activity is definitely concentrated in shoreline areas. On the right, you can see there's our, is the lakes and rivers that get the activity. One thing that I see happening is Devil's Track has always, in the last, up until the last couple of years, has always been the highest number, has had the highest number of permits. And now every year for the last couple of years, uh, activity has definitely dropped off. On the flip side, Caribou and Gunflint have had a ton of activity. And, and the, and they continue to have a ton of activity. And Tom Lake also, um, since I've been doing this job, has always been pretty consistent. Quite a few permits issued on Tom Lake. I just threw this up there. We do use land use districts and the, I kind of threw, we started using land use districts as a term just for field, um, field work and kind of trying to figure out where to go, um, given the size of the county. It kind of correlates with commissioner districts roughly, very roughly. But it also correlates with the PIDs. Um, so I just wanted to show this for a couple things. Caribou, that district on the west end has the highest number as well as Hovland. So the west and the east end are where we're getting the highest permit numbers. Hovland, I think, could be explained simply because that's where a lot of the private property is. That's pretty consistent. But, uh, Caribou is definitely becoming one of those areas that is seeing a ton of activity. And that's, that's definitely changed even in the last few, um, few years as well. It's becoming more and more active. We do issue permits up in some of the properties up on Grand Portage and we did issue one this year. So we do see that every once in a while. Another note is Gunflint this year did dive off as far as permit loads go.
That's because Heidi moved up there.
I don't really have any explanation other than just pointing out that Gunflint usually has twice that number of permits.
I get signs.
Signs based on how you want to start again.
Running, running through the, all these are kind of our sub-permits now, or the permits that kind of go along with it. The variances, of course, are when you can't meet all the setbacks. And we are seeing a tick, uptick in, um, variances. You can see the overall trend line there since 2009. Even just last year went from 29, from 21 to 29. You know, that's a fair amount. The most common variance that's approved is for shoreline setback. The next one is from a road. So, you know, there, there, there are some implications when we are approving 30 variances a year that we are approving more structures to be built closer to the lake. Especially in that's just an increasing trend.
Not necessarily a full structure to be built, but expanding on a current one and there's an awareness to expand.
True. And, and, uh, that, that's a great point because, um, we also are dealing with very small lots typically, especially the old ones in shoreline areas, which do create, set up this, you know, this practical difficulty for applicants.
So Dave, I'm going to stop you. And if we can keep you guys and have you come back, we're going to do our public hearing and then we'll continue on your presentation.
I can, I'm going to keep that just.
Yes, it doesn't go away. So I need a motion to close the county board meeting and open to public hearing. Commissioner Mo, Commissioner Severson, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. So now we are having a public hearing on SCDP 2016 Housing. And Scott Sahorik is here to update the board. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thanks for coming. I hope I don't jinx things for you here.
I bet you you're interested in this, though.
Yeah, yeah. And some of the earlier conversation too kind of fits into what brings me here today, anyway. As you're aware, uh, the community of Lutzen put in a preliminary proposal to deed, uh, the Department of Employment and Economic Development for their Small Cities Development Program. And they were invited back to submit a full application. And while this is no guarantee of, of funding, usually, uh, you know, usually their applications are probably three or four to one for what they'll fund for the pre-applications. But usually by the time. but usually by the time you get to this level in submitting the full application, the odds dramatically improve. So while I don't want to promise that it's going to happen for Lutzen, the odds look pretty good at this point. But what we're proposing to do, AEOA has worked with Cook County for quite a while on a number of these grants. We've got some going in Grand Marais right now for some commercial properties. We've done rental rehab with this funding and the Grand Marais apartments, and done some housing with it as well. But for Lutzen, what we're looking to do is rehabilitate eight units of owner occupied housing. So we've done some interest lists from the folks in the area, and what they can get is, these homeowners could get up to $24,750 in small cities funding to rehabilitate their homes. And what we do in this process then, too, is match up other funding that we have available to us at AEOA. And we really don't know exactly what those numbers are going to be, but based on the incomes of the homeowners living in those homes and past experience with these grants, it's probably going to add probably another $7,500 per home, so it'll put it up in the $32,000 range. So for eight or more homeowners down in the Lutzen area, this could have a pretty significant impact on the state of their home. So what I, and then the timeline on this, just so you know a little bit about that, too. They'll make their decisions probably in June this year. The applications are due this month. And then if we're awarded, we'll start marketing right away this year, looking to get some projects started in August or September of 2016, finishing the bulk of the work probably in the 2017 construction season, and closing it out at the end of 2017. But then for today, what I need from you folks today is we have to have a resolution from a governing body for the community of Lutzen, which brings me to the Cook County Board today. So, and this is just validating that the Cook County Board has the authority to apply for this funding. So, and that I had sent ahead of time to Brady for the resolution. And then just documentation that we did indeed have this public hearing today, and part of that validation is also the citizen participation plan that just said that we did have a public hearing and opened it up to the public if they had comments.
Okay, so for the board, what we'll do is we'll go to public comment, we'll close public comment. The board can ask questions. No motion can be made until after we close the public hearing and open back up to the county board. So at this time, is there any public that wishes to speak to this matter? Raise your hand so I can get an idea of how many of you are in line here. Nobody's hands going up, going once. Nobody wants to talk to public comment. Okay, we will turn it over to the county board. Commissioner Severson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm very excited about this project, and fingers crossed.
Commissioner Starley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So these eight families have applied for this, and is it like insulating shingles? What does it all include if they would receive?
The families have not applied for it yet. What we had done was contacted some folks that live in the area to see if they would be interested in a program. The application piece will come once, once the funding's been awarded, because we're going to want to blanket the community so that everyone's aware of it and has an equal chance to apply for the funding. But then what it can do is basically anything on the home itself, roof siding, windows, doors, insulation, if need be kitchen and bathroom remodels, you know, those types of things, floor coverings. The one thing that this program cannot do is increase the square footage of the structure. So it is working on the existing building and just taking care of, more than likely, what's been some deferred maintenance issues for the owners. And then we'll work with other programs. We've got other programs like the weatherization program that can do insulating, through energy assistance, there's furnace programs if they, you know, need help with their mechanical systems. So once the candidates have been identified, then we'll really zero in on their income and their application and see what else we can bring to bear.
So you can have up to eight?
We'll have at least eight. The program requirement is eight. Usually, trying to make projects come out to exactly $24,750 is usually a little bit of a struggle. And sometimes we'll come across a home that doesn't need as much work. And if that's the case, it'll be a smaller project, and then we would, you know, typically in this, with this project, I would expect to do at least nine projects.
Thank you.
Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now Scott, you touched on some of them, but is there a formula that determines the amount of money? In other words, how did we, how did we arrive at the eight? Is it based upon a population or something? As far as making that application for funds, how did we arrive at eight?
Well, typically, it's based on that interest, and then deed has a bit of an unwritten rule that they want to see at least one and a half times the number of interested applicants. So we had a dozen responses to it, and then basically used their unwritten formula and came up with the eight. So, but what this will do, too, is as we look forward and look down, you know, into the future with it, too, it also helps just by having a project in that area to validate that interest. If we do eight in this first project, and suddenly we have 30 homeowners clamoring for the program, it just validates the program, and then the next application would likely be larger, you know. So we do have to, and you folks, for on behalf of Cook County, we need to, you know, deed allocates their money not necessarily based on population, but population does come into play. So part of what I'm always looking for as an administrator of this program is some input from that area about where the priorities are and what you'd like to see going forward as well. You know, we want to try and make sure that we're covering the entire county and that folks throughout the county have an opportunity to get help, but there's also other things that can be done, and I touched on some of those, the commercial projects, the rental projects, and things like that, too. So, you know, anytime there's housing studies or community surveys and things like that, you know, we want to use that information, too, to make sure we're targeting these applications to the true needs of the communities.
Madam Chair, Scott, thank you. So there, obviously, there is, there is a criteria formula that determines the amount of allocation, so to speak, initially, and that's why we came up with the eight and that $24,000 whatever. And then the next question is, is that when the, in the event that the grant monies are provided, that it's offered to residents within that area, and the criteria that is used to determine who qualifies for those dollars and who makes that decision as to who is awarded those dollars?
Typically, well, who qualifies is based on, they need to, you know, in this case with owner occupied rehab, they need to be a homeowner of record, you know, with a recorded mortgage or contract for deed here with the county. Then we go to their income levels, and in this case, for the Small Cities Program, it's 80% of area median. I've got it in my bag, but I think a family of four is about $48,000 or less. And then typically, what we'll do as far as who receives the funding is send out information to everyone within the community, and then we'll pick a spot in the community, and on that day, folks will come and bring their applications to us, and we'll just fill out a list and go first come, first served until the money's gone.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Moore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This question, I think, might be for you, too. The, obviously, this is a great opportunity for us, and thank you for coming up and presenting. The grant request came from the county, but from the EDA specifically, which, which you sit on, and, and obviously, there's a need there in some Lutzen housing stock, but there are other locations in the county that, that could also benefit from such a grant opportunity. So in the future, how might other parts of the county become involved in the next grant request?
Basically, by, you know, showing the interest or it being a priority for the county. I mean, if you guys wanted to develop some sort of a list or something as far as, you know, or have a group or a subgroup, you know, somewhere that would like to guide that process, you know better than I do, coming from Virginia, you know, where the true needs are in the community. So any of that input's always valuable, and also, not only the where, but helping me make the case for the need. You know, that's where I can really use some help with the local input then, too.
Scott, isn't it currently based on the traffic that comes through the office in town of where the needs are?
That's been a part of it. Lutzen was kind of, you know, in the west end, was kind of identified as a priority now that there had been a few, few grants in Grand Marais. But, you know, then the biggest thing is, there's got to be a bit of an economy of scale. You know, usually when we're looking at the real smaller parts of the county or the townships and things like that, deed scores these projects based on need and impact. So you have to show that there are folks there that need assistance to fix up their homes, and then they're always, and that's the thing that it's a little tougher in Cook County to do than other places in the state, but showing that impact, because what they really like is to drive into a given area and see a change. Well, you know what, in rural Minnesota, that's a little tougher to do sometimes.
A little tough in Hovland.
Yeah.
You have your residents call Anita at the office, she puts together lists and keeps it together, and she lets Scott and Leah know, you know, I've got like 10 applications here, I've got this much funding, I can help out this many people, but we've got to find a new program. So we have a lot of programs that help, and I know you've got residents out there that have had the heating assistance and the furnace replacement, but the more people that come in, that really helps us to, I know it's tough to come in and ask for help.
Right.
But if you can reiterate to your community that it's important that we get those numbers, and if they want to call me, if they don't know Anita, then I can work with them, too, and you obviously can work with Anita.
Sure. Their applications go in annually, so I mean, we could, you know, certainly be submitting, you know, something on an annual basis, and, but that plan of how we go about it, the one thing we don't want to do is start pitting Cook County communities against each other, you know, so. And it's just probably a cold hard fact that we're not going to get more than one project funded. But if we look at the entire community and look at the whole area and say, okay, now we've been here, we've been here, what are we missing? You know, we can do things that way, too, because we do want to make sure that parts of the county aren't being, I don't want to say ignored, but maybe waiting longer than they need to, you know.
Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Scott, is there an example of a county that would be somewhat similar to us that has how they've done it and from your observation have done it well? And I guess, you know, that's, that's one question. The other thing that, there are fundings that come available for different things, like our airport. And when we're in a cycle where we want to expand our airport, there's monies that are available, but because of that rotating nature of those funds, sometimes we have to negotiate with another county that's in line to receive those funds in order to make them available to us when we need them, and then when it comes our turn, we'll make it available to them. That, that only in the context of the rotating nature, as you referred to, of just wanting to make sure that there's equal opportunity throughout a particular county. So my question then is, if there is a county that maybe has accomplished that rotating nature so that it's inclusive of all, you know, parts of the county, that we might learn from, so that we can be a little more proactive in that?
I keep records of all of deed's fundings across the state, where they are, and how much they got, and what they were for. I don't have it with me. I've got it back to probably 2007. But there are definitely counties that, that do very well with this resource, you know. And that's what started me looking at it, was the difference in how some counties receive almost no funding, and some have done extremely well. So there, maybe there are some lessons learned that I could probably take a look at and provide some information back to you on that. Because I was just thinking like Kitzin Corner the most, you know, northwest piece of it of Minnesota, and they've done extremely well up there. But maybe looking for a little bit of a pattern in how they manage that. You know, I know part of that was flooding and things like that, too, that contributed to it, too. But it would definitely be worth a look to make sure we're not overlooking anything.
And Madam Chair, Scott, the, in, in the workshop yesterday with the governor's thing at NACO, when the Secretary of the Department of, you know, Agriculture said, there are a lot of resources that we have, and we want to help, it's just making people aware of them. And I think in our regard to Commissioner Moore's, you know, question, and certainly as a board overall, representing, you know, our districts within Cook County, is that knowing those programs that are out there can assist and help, and communicating that in a way, and, you know, be good stewards of that opportunity. Certainly, resources in some regards go untapped because we don't know. So the more we're informed on it, and the more that we can learn by other people's practices, I think would be beneficial to constituents, so, thank you.
If there aren't any further questions, could we get a motion to close the public hearing?
So.
Commissioner Campbell?
Second.
Commissioner Severson, any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, at this time, I need a motion. He's heard it, yes, very gracious. No pressure at all for you.
I make a motion that we certainly contribute and promote the, where am I? It's a resolution. I'm on a resolution, okay. That we need a sponsor for the project for the deed application in Lutzen.
Okay, can I get a second? Commissioner Campbell? Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so we are going to finish up with Dave. We're going to take a quick break, because I'm sure everybody's squirrely at this point, and then we will move on to C Club.
Thanks, Dave. Yes, you stayed as watching.
Thanks again, Madam Chair. So variances, we've seen an uptick, right? Here's our, this is again the list, the variances that were actually approved, and it was hard to read, but the big takeaway from here is that we have a number of shoreline setbacks, road setbacks, and really just a handful of after the facts. So just a couple, you know, violations that get to a variance phase, so that's, that's a good thing. And, you know, Tim kind of was alluding to this earlier with the administrative subdivisions. So this is when you want to split a property, but do it administratively, so not go through the formal planning process. This has been consistent. You can see how in 2009, kind of leading, and even the years ahead of that, there was usually always a couple dozen, if not more, splits in the county. And that has definitely been dropping off fairly steadily. I mean, you can note that in 2014, there, there were only nine splits. So nine parcels in the county were split up this way. I don't, I, there's, I don't have an explanation for this, other than it's definitely a trend that we're seeing, and it's been consistent.
It's called property boarding.
No, I know, anyway, it's bouncy.
Yeah. So conditional use and interim use permits. You know, as, you know, we were talking about earlier with conditional uses, and, so remember, we have permitted uses, which is just something that you can do on, in any given zone district. And then conditional uses, interim use permits, being ones that go in front of the planning commission, and of course, you guys interact with that at the end. The interim use permits are basically like our temporary RVs. We started those in 2011, so you see, that's where the data will pick up that orange line. And these guys are kind of, they kind of bounce around. The CUPs, you can see, remain pretty steady, you know, seven, eight a year. One thing I was curious about, the IUPs, the interim use permits, is that they tend to be cyclic, or it's starting to look like they're going to be cyclic along with our permitting, our temporary RV permits. So there's, but, you know, you can see how many we're doing. Conditional use permits and interim use permits, I mean, they take, they're fairly intense in the fact that they have to be reviewed, you know, administratively, then they go into the planning commission, and they come to you folks, so, you know, it's.
Dave, the interim use permits, so for RVs, for example, those are now going to be handled administratively, so that might, in future years, keep that number down.
Yeah, I mean, commit.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioner Moore, yeah, the.
Yeah, um, Madam Chair, Commissioner Mo, yeah, the, the whole, um, we, we had seen that cyclic, that, that's one of the main reasons why we even, uh, adopted that interim use, uh, portion of it, was to look at, um, the RVs and some of those activities that may be okay for a while, but we really wanted a, a re-review, like at a property transfer point or something like that. And yeah, we just recently, uh, went ahead and, and made those administrative for the, specifically for the, uh, RV use, um, long-term. And so those, as far as interim use permits, are, are gonna drop way out. But we will still have other activities that will, uh, call for interim use permits.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, here's the list of the conditional use permits we approved last year, um, one being the town top, the, also a couple amendments to PUDs, and, um, the tower, our county armor tower. Um, just one IUP for a temporary RV. Um, and here is that temporary RV, again, you could kinda see the cycle here, look at 2011, two thou, or 2010, 2011, to 2015, you know, so it's kinda following, um, every, every few years, a spike and drop. Um, at the same time, they are still increasing, you know, slightly increase over, over the time. Um, and, you know, I, I have all reason to believe that they will continue to kind of keep up with that little increase there.
Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dave, um, yeah, an inference from what we're seeing in that trend could be that financially, and as these requests have come before the board, that it's, people set out with an intention, but they can't move towards what their end goal is because of financial, you know, situation. And so I would agree that, that we might see an increase in that simply because people are not in a position to follow through on their second stage, so, so to speak. So, uh, I think that's something to be mindful of.
Um, yeah, Commissioner Campbell, I think that's an excellent point. I mean, you look at the, you look at the cost of the, uh, infrastructure, um, the basics, you know, the sewer and water and road and electricity. And the, this, I mean, that's part of the intentions for having this element of our permitting, is that we can accommodate for the folks who, you know, just can't throw out $200,000 and are piecing their way through it. Um, I think it's extremely important.
Yeah. The other, the other thing I just noted in looking at the, the variances, that, uh, out of the 28, 27 of them had to do with setback issues. So, um, when we're, when we're looking at what, what we learn from when we grant those variances, when there are setback issues, uh, I think it's, it's, it's important to understand that the, that those that are entrusted with the authority of making those decisions are making decisions in that kind of context. And if you're looking at setbacks from property lines or roads or from wetlands or waters, that tells you something as to stewardship overall, which is the intent of so many ordinances.
The nice thing with the shoreline setback is a lot of these properties were already encroaching on the shoreline setback, and our planning commission is pretty adamant moving forward that they have rain deterrent gutter systems and redirect the flow of water. So it's kind of beneficial that they're all coming in in this direction, and it's kind of improving what's going on and keeping our water safe. Tim?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Campbell, I, I think, uh, the, the chair made a really good point before that, the, the vast majority of those are extensions onto already pre-existing structures. Um, now, we do have, uh, a provision that actually is stated in the statute, but carries over into our ordinance, that, um, if you have, uh, an existing non-conforming cabin, say, you can tear that cabin down and rebuild it in its exact same footprint without having to get a variance. Most people though, we find that are doing that, will tear their cabin but find that they may have a better place to build beyond or behind that. So they're actually, even though they're getting a variance to, to violate the, the setback distance, they're actually further back than where they were to begin with.
Interesting.
And they, and they may build a little bigger or so, but it ends up in being a, a better situation, especially with the conditions of the rain catchment gutters and everything like that, than what the original, uh, situation was.
And there's at least one on this list, that, that's the option that they made, and so they're actually less visible from the lake. They're much more visible from the road, but...
And your office is working with them to help them to navigate that, have less of an impact and not more.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And Tim, and I think, I think that's, that's an important to, to note. In other words, when we, when we look at, at how we administer our ordinances, that if, if we are, uh, called into question as to whether or not we're too lenient, or whether or not, you know, we're protective enough of different things, that when you look at, uh, the incidence of individuals that actually are asking for a variance but based upon moving away, that you need to understand those numbers in that context, not as a whole, because otherwise it, it misinforms.
Tim?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Campbell, that's, that's exactly correct. And it al, it is also correct that what you do not see here, and we've, we've dabbled in whether should we, we should record these or note these, but what, what we don't see are those applications or those, um, projects where a person may intend to just, uh, get a variance, like, I notice just get a variance, but work with our office in being able to restructure where they're constructing so that they don't require a variance. So there's, there's an already kind of a pre-filter of working with us to knock down the number of variances that would already be to keep people conforming and keep them happy in, in constructing where, where they would like to build, but not have to go through that process. And that's one, uh, an important thing that, um, that we've even testified down at the state legislature, has this impression that if you have a large number of approved variances, you must be a lenient county. But they don't see that number that comes right from the door of that number that kind of filters out before it even gets to, um, the Board of Adjustment. And also the fact that we work with people that come to try to, um, better their chances of getting something approved. You know, we get a feel of how the Board of Adjustment works and what their decision criteria is ours, it's spelled out in the ordinance, you say, well, maybe if you built this way or if you did that way, you would have a, a better chance of getting the Board of Adjustment to approve that. So we actually assist, um, property owners through that process so that the chances of having an application come to the Board of Adjustment and get approved are actually increased or better than not, um, just because they've had the opportunity to work with the staff through the process.
So if we look at my property on Gunplint, I am not within the setbacks. That's how the property was built. And we have to fix our roof. Well, in fixing our roof, we will put on gutters. We may have to come in for a variance because then the new roofline with the gutters will not be in the current footprint, which is already in restricted area. So, simple things like that, where somebody's replacing their roof, puts them before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and those are things that we work on with the office. So anybody watching on the video, and you think it's just a good thing to replace your roof, check with Planning and Zoning and make sure that, you know, if you want a nice little porch and have your roof go over, those are things that you should check with our office, just to make sure you don't get an after the fact. Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And to that, uh, to that point that you, that you made, Tim, about the people in, in the department, working with individuals that come in, and that's in response, I think, you know, coming out of the town hall meeting, Commissioner Mo had, that, that people were saying, we just like to feel when we walk in that people are there to help us. And, and certainly, you know, what you've explained to us in your narrative is that you're willing to do that. And, uh, that, to, to my point, that these numbers reflect, in fact, you know, what we do to be proactive in that area, whether it's a state agency or an individual or any other entity that comes in and questions, we can demonstrate by what we know in our numbers and what we have done, that we are both responsive and good stewards of what we've been entrusted with. So I applaud you for that.
Go ahead.
Thanks, just a couple more slides, guys. Um, stormwater permits, you know, we have, uh, three different kinds of permits. We have small site, uh, actually, just to go back, graded fills, small site, then a large site. Graded fills being the smallest, large site, of course, are the bigger projects that are over an acre in size. Um, you can kinda see they, um, the small sites continue to just kind of, they're their highest volume, and they continue to have basically a flat, um, line, if not increase a little bit. Um, same with large site, large site, we always just have, you know, one or two a year. Um, you know, things like the, uh, Lutzen Golf Court, Superior National Golf Course, that was a large site. Um, graded fills are, which are, you know, used to be pretty high levels, they're, they're continuing to drop. And, uh, again, not really much of an explanation there. Um, maybe the, maybe the projects are just a little, are a little bit larger, so they're being permitted as small sites. Um, but pretty consistent overall, um, for our stormwater program. Uh, wetlands, wetlands are, continue to kind of, you know, uh, increase slightly. There's spikes, um, that go along with it. Um, you know, these are just decisions, formal decisions. Um, the vast majority of the wetland work is actually, uh, just done on, on-site, uh, where, um, determinations are made that the project doesn't have to include, involve wetlands, um, which is, uh, follows suit with the rule. And so they're not tracked here. Um, but nonetheless, uh, you know, the two dozen to three dozen permits a year is, you know, considerable, especially considering the length of, of the permitting process for these wetland projects.
Dave, what, Madam Chair, uh, percentage approximately of, of, uh, site visits you make, what percent do you think would actually require a decision? Do you have an idea about that? When you, when you're, when you go to a site to make a wetland determination, is it required, is a decision required here or not? And I've been with you in both situations, but what percent do you feel like actually you have to make some type of decision?
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner Mo, that's a good question. I would say that the, uh, it's about 25% of all wetland decisions are represented here.
Three-quarters of the time, then, this, it's, you determine it's not a, a wetland issue?
Yeah, yes. Um, and, and if, even if there are wetlands present, we work with the landowner, um, to try to figure out how to stake that road or kinda just nudge that site prep area a little bit out of it.
Away from that.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the reality is, nobody wants to build in wetlands anyways for many reasons. And so it's not a very hard sell, you know, when you start talking about digging a footing into that area.
You wanna sink your house into that?
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
A, a lot of it though is education. You know, we have really hard forested wetlands here, and most people don't realize that there's areas of the county that are wetlands, especially here on this, on the shore. Um, our side slope forested wetlands are very tough. They look just like a normal popple forest, you know? Um, here, here's some stats that go with that. I really just kinda wanna draw your attention to a couple numbers. The one is rate of the total wetland impacts approved. Um, it's about three tenths of an acre. And so, you know, if you think about that in your head, three tenths of an acre of total projects of wetlands approved, um, every year, um, I personally look at that as a pretty good thing. It's not very much. And, you know, keep in mind, these include some of the big projects, you know, last year or the year before was the airport project. And yeah, spiked it up to about a half acre. But overall, when you're talking about 10% of the county is wetland, um, that's not too bad. The other thing I wanted to, uh, draw your attention to was the wetland banks. Um, we've been very active in the last seven years in trying to find more wetland banks. There were zero when I started, and we now have one with two more in the hopper, one that's about to be approved any day now. Um, so that just changed the entire dynamics of, of it. Uh, people can now, uh, purchase wetland credits from, within the county, within the major watershed even. So it not only follows rule very closely, but it also makes more sense intuitively that you're replacing wetlands from your watershed.
And keeping the money here in the county?
And, and, excellent point, and keeping your money here in the county. Um, septic systems, you know, we continue to see a rise in septic systems, um, over, you know, inspections. Um, our failure rate is 28%. I'll, I'll, I'll show you that, how that's represented. That's a good thing. Um, none of this includes the lake shore inspection programs. Um, but you could see that a lot of the, that we still continue to see, uh, uptick. Um, 2015, or 2010, I, I don't really have an explanation for that year. Um, but 15 is very low. It's just, it, it seems out of the ordinary. Um, but we continue to have, you know, 70 a year with some upticks there with 2011, there was a, a spike in activity. But the failure rates, this is, um, this, I think this is, is, is big. Uh, you can see it, it's almost half of where it was. Uh, to me, this tells me that the program's working. A, a fewer amount of our septic systems are in failure. And, uh, I think that this is one of the big takeaways here, is that our septic program is, seems to be, um, turning up less failing systems.
And the economy is recovering, so people have the money to do it. And, you know, for a while there, when you're flat broke, you're not gonna call Planning and Zoning and ask them to inspect your septic tank, 'cause that might cost you 30 grand. So it's a, it's a great program. Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Dave, uh, how much of that was influenced by grant monies that were made available? Or those grant monies are in conjunction with the, the lake shore, you said that this is not reflective of that?
That, that's correct. This is not, um, these numbers aren't capturing the lake shore inspection programs. Um, do you have any insight to that question?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioner Campbell, the, the grant, there's a couple pools of grant funds, and, and we have used grant, grant funds in the lake shore septic compliance program, which are not represented here. But we do also have, um, funds that we bring in for the low interest, uh, loan program. And some of those are represented here. Um, not a, not a ton. Um, but what we're seeing here with the, with the failure rate are those systems, basically, that had been put in 10, 15, some odd years ago, that someone comes in and they, they trigger an inspection, or if they're selling a property and they wanna do it, and then we go inspect that existing system, it's not failing. And that's, that's from the, the more recent, uh, systems that have gone in.
Yeah, and Madam Chair, Tim, as a follow-up, the, when something triggers an inspection, that, that's not a voluntary, you know, choice. That's something that, because of regulation that we put in place, and so now somebody's gotta comply. Uh, when we have programs in place, and this is why the lake shore, you know, was, was more attractive, because there was monies available to help with that. So when we partnership and, and create, you know, funding mechanisms or ways that help, I, I, I think that that reflects well, and the community feels that, that, uh, we're trying to balance that need to be compliant and yet understand the financial impact. And that, I would just say, I think that there is significant amount of money that was just granted to Koochichin County relative, 'cause, you know, with all of the water that they have up there. Whenever money is in place to help with compliance, I'm sure that their numbers are gonna reflect, are gonna reflect, you know, a whole lot better, because there's some mechanism that helps you get where you wanna be.
Okay.
Uh, Madam Chair, Commissioner Campbell, that, the, the funds that I'm talking about with the low interest loan, uh, replacement funds, those, those are applicable whether the system has failed regardless of it's a trigger or if it's the septic compliance program. So any failing system, uh, can go through this, uh, through that program. We do on occasion receive actual grant funds from the Pollution Control Agency that we can grant out. That's not a loan, that's a grant, and that has a means testing. But those, that only applies, cover maybe two systems every couple years or so. It's, it's not very much. But though, that, that is a means testing one. But the, the loan program is, is open regardless of, of how the system fails or what the triggers are.
And Tim and Molly and I are gonna be on WTIP's first Thursday on April 7th to talk about this wonderful program and septic, septic compliance and everything. So I hope everyone watching and sitting on this board is tuning into that. We're headed, what does a 7:00 PM? April 7th.
Okay, 7:00, 7:00 again.
Yes. It's the WTIP first Thursday conversation.
We're gonna have to tape it, 'cause we've got the trail plan hearing.
Or you can adjust your schedule. Pipe it in here.
It's March 7th.
Here's a smart show.
Two 7:00 7ths, but different...
So, we will, we will be talking about all things septic.
Um, se, pardon my format, I don't know, trying to capture 2016 evidently. Um, the septic permits are, are kind of going down, uh, but at the same time, it's really just offset from that 2012. Um, here is a situation where we might've actually captured the lake shore, um, because 2012, a lot of permits were issued to, uh, replace lake shore inspection. So that 2012 data obviously kinda skews it. If you look at overall, 136, 128, 131, 132, it's pretty consistent. About 130 septic permits issued a year. Um, water testing is something we do, uh, we've been doing a lot of. There's, uh, programs, we're working with Public Health and Human Services, and the clinic on this. We do both fluoride and water tests. You kinda see it, jump it around a little bit. Um, but fluoride tests have kind, have increased quite a bit. Um, I know there's a oral task force grant that, um, has, um, enabled more folks to participate in this program. So, um, and then here's, uh, but the final one here, enforcement. Um, you know, this is part of, part of the territory as well for us, as you guys all know. Um, you kinda see though, there's a drop in enforcement. You can kind of see though, there's a drop in enforcement. Again, I spin that to say that's a good thing, right? It's, it means that comply, overall compliance all around the county with all of our permit types is, seems to be, the compliance rate is high, so the enforcement cases are low. I don't think that's even much of a spin, and.
A little bit.
In 2015, we only had to initiate 23 enforcements. And this goes, you know, we do, as built, we check every single one of our permits, and when, when it gets to a point of enforcement, it's something that just can't be, a difference between what was built and what was permitted, that can't be reconciled. So with 23 enforcement cases, when you're talking about having 500 some permits total, is, you know, pretty good, so.
Those are 23 new enforcements in that given year?
Yes, that's correct.
Does that include septic enforcement?
No, this is, again, this is, none of this has a lake shore program or anything, this is just our land use, our variances, our RVs, those sorts of permits, yeah. So, yeah, noted though, because my number of 500 permits would be less the septic permits than. And then, last thing here, the fees, you can kind of see, we, we are, you know, ticking up in fees slightly, but pretty consistent, somewhere around, you know, 50,000 is what we take in for fees. So, if there's any, if there's not any other questions, that's, that concludes my presentation.
Thanks for that presentation. Beautiful.
Thanks for the conversation.
Thanks for being patient with the technology and us and public hearings and all that. All right, we are going to take a quick five minute break, and then we'll get to C-Club.
I think, yep, exactly, I think I found my issue.
Thanks Dave. It was interesting to see.
You start to see stuff happen. You start to see the trends now.
You're going to fight them, and then I'm on that board for a while. It's, it's pretty interesting to see it in.
Yeah, Dan.
That damn liberal board.
What are you here for?
I want to hear the planning and zoning stuff.
Oh, okay.
And then the, the D funds.
Okay.
Well, we have on the agenda the senior center budget here, you see that?
Dan?
Yes.
Oh my God, I knew it.
We heard you got some else, some money elsewhere.
Well, I just figured I haven't been here for a while, better show up, and then I.
Better remind you.
Well, yeah, I saw you yesterday, yeah, Dan. I don't know where that came out, it's a little off the top of my head, I'm pretty sure, I'll tell you. Some days are just.
The older I get, I have to ask Sherry often, I'm, wait, am I 50, or am I 49 or 51, I can't remember?
Yeah.
She's always one year older than she really is.
Yeah. Sorry, you're a man.
Jeff, I was going to ask her.
Well, back to the grind.
There are.
This is a separate call.
Otherwise, basically, looking at this, this is.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll just, I'll just.
Yes, formatting, someone else's formatting.
Yeah.
It's complicated work.
Just trying to do it quickly. There's nothing. Nice attendance on the, whatever it was.
I don't take those committees unless I intend to. It's kind of funny, but like I told, Tim, I said, I think I found your problem, I pointed to that list, me, me right in the middle of the list. I often wonder if I'm too liberal for the spot, but actually, they think it's just, no, we're going to see so much more of that with my group, and I'm in the middle of the big blue belt room. I'm sincere. We're going to talk, you know, want to build something on your substandard law, reconstruct something.
Well, and where, where you're in an urban area, they, it's, it's the nature of what you do down there, so they wonder why in the world we can't do. And the problem with it is.
We're just going to leave it at that. Excellent.
Leadership.
Because, thinking three weeks, you're walking, that's actually why I'm down.
Now we just have phones.
All just right next. So which is, yeah.
The soup's got 13 on back.
Sorry.
There you go.
One? You're going to have to pump for one car, oh, that's great.
They were almost impossible.
Okay.
Okay.
So, and we.
As a deal for your family.
Right, right. So. Where we have our septic in our well, and that's the point where we now. We reduce whatever happens, and now we.
I don't know.
Because now I'm sure I can get a variance to build up, and use the cabin as a fort, use a fort. The way I go, my land, I kind of give a snake business.
Well, but were you sort of railroaded in that direction because of what your intention was, or was that simply?
No, there was just no.
Yeah, yeah, so when you, when you know, when you know, have no options. I think giving people options, leads people to their still, to their own life, like of their destiny, but when you take that ability away, we're going to tell you one.
Yeah, I heard in my 94.
It's got to be transmission.
I'm not having to turn the white locks, it's hurting my fair.
Oh, yeah.
But still, you're separating your wells, your tanks. And all of a sudden, your lots start shrinking down in size, and you kind of. After work. I wish I'd never put the well over there. It's, that's the one thing really careful.
Well, that's the one thing where I think.
I'm kidding.
But that was never something, not as a person.
That's right.
Oh, no, I love that.
You can make the decision, but we're just going to give you the information base about the quality.
Actually, I'm true.
Yeah. I know you do.
Outsheds, outshades.
Even if those moves are trying to hit. Yeah. You could probably bring it back here at this point.
But I'm grabbing people, that's the thing with people, those people who come up here to rebuild their cabin.
I attended to that five minute.
Yeah, with cabin.
All right, you guys, let's gather back up so we can get, and get this work gal out of here.
Gather round.
Mother and is calling.
I don't know how we say that, gather round group, they had something to show us. Gather round.
Well, I tell you, I have something, both from the standpoint of forgery, because of disease.
I had to dig for a piece of candy, so I can't share, I don't have anything else.
Nobody's asking you to share, you just remind me. Nobody brings treats today.
Who's on duty?
Who do we have to get out today?
Cool.
Seriously.
You know it, 4/7.
February.
January.
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 No kidding.
No kidding, 2/23.
Fire.
Well, what should I do?
You should take, take, take us to lunch.
I just got it figured out.
All right, that's, no hesitation at all.
I just don't want you to sit around feeling guilty.
No, just get through the pendants.
Stacy?
Good morning. Hi.
So you have no backup, huh?
I don't have any backup.
Excellent.
Um, it's just me.
So for those that are not familiar, this is Stacy Drewlard, and she, tell us your new position with C-Club.
Um, hello, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, I will say. I do know most of you, some of you not formally, so, hello, thank you for putting us in. My name is Stacy Drewlard, I'm a woman raised in Grand Ray, and ran a business for several years, and I took over as C-Club Coordinator just in January. So, for Virginia Danfelt, who was the Coordinator for four years, and she says, please give them a hello, and wants to extend thanks and for working with her for four years in her absence, so I'm sharing that with everyone. And so, really, I think you all received information, the C-Club report and other information in your packets, and so I'm here to introduce myself and share what the successes of C-Club were last year and years prior, and give you a sense of what direction we're headed, and answer any questions that you might have. Hopefully I can answer. I gave a, a copy of the going solar electric guide, that was put together and published by C-Club last year. It's on its second printing, which is.
Awesome.
Exciting. It is available online, as well as at several locations, including the library, and we also sell cop, print copies for people who are interested. And it's a fairly comprehensive guide for people who are interested in adding a solar PV system to their home or business. And it's 38 pages, it covers local examples, as well as the different kinds of systems that people can consider. The federal tax credit for solar and renewables has been extended, which is exciting news. That means people will have incentive to consider solar or wind buy-ins, or solar community gardens, or what you have you. The federal tax credit actually gives people 30, a 30% rebate on installation of new, or addition to existing solar power systems for homes or businesses. So, we have that, and that project was a grant funded project last year, the Lloyd K. Johnson did fund that. And there are currently 62 solar households in Cook County, and the number continues to grow, and so we're keeping a list of people who are interested, and just trying to direct them in the, where they'd like to be, I guess. The other things in the report from 2015, and this is a report that Virginia actually put together, she does have a summary of the biomass project that C-Club worked on, and that's currently suspended, but the groundwork has now been done, so that if there is an opportunity in the future, that can be drawn upon, and used as a resource. We've toyed around a bit with solar thermal, and there is a solar hot water system installed at North House that C-Club was involved in, and that's being monitored and improved with mixed results. But it's been, you know, interesting, so thanks to North House for being the experiment. The other major program that C-Club works on is the REAP program, that is the Residential Energy Efficiency Program, and that is something that we have used counties slash EDA funding for. The program, I don't remember the year that it began, but Virginia Danfelt has been instrumental in administering that program, and she is working on a full report, which will get to all of the key players shortly, it's part of what, one of her last responsibilities that she's working on. And so last year, Chris Norman, who was the auditor previously, the, who goes into people's homes and does the assessment, moved away, and so Mike Santi, a local builder, has now been trained and is doing audits. I sat in on one audit, and there are several audits being scheduled for April. The REAP program is a good opportunity for people who want to improve the energy efficiency of their home, and really target things that can be done to save money and energy. And so the, it's actually a payback program, if you're not familiar, the clients pay $400, they're given their assessments, and then once improvements are made, they receive $300 back on their audit investment. And as I said, Virginia will be compiling some good numbers on that shortly. A new initiative, the CASE program, which the Board of Commissioners passed, that's a joint powers agreement with the St. Paul Board Authority, and C-Club is involved along with the Cook County Chamber and the EDA. The goal is to do a local workshop, potentially, if there's interest, and that is specifically for businesses that want to add renewable capabilities to their structures or build structure utilizing renewable energy methods. And so that's a, a new program that we hope to see some progress on this coming year. On February 3rd, C-Club and Cook County Extension co-sponsored a building workshop, and that was a wild success, we had 39 area contractors, builders, and homeowners attend, it was a day-long session. Builders received their energy credits for attending, and, and we want to thank Cook County Planning and Zoning, because they contributed to that effort as well, as the EDA and several other private businesses that made that workshop happen. And, let's see, C-Club was involved in the land use plan, which I don't personally know much about, that was primarily Virginia's work. And then currently, we have some workshops that we're working on in, at North House Folk School for April. And so there are three evenings scheduled in April, April is the Earth Day month, and so it's centered around Earth Day, and the idea of sustainable and energy efficiency. So we'll have something about energy efficiency building from the outside in, we'll have a solar power hour, we're hoping, that's not yet been confirmed, and.
Just an hour?
And, and then a keynote speaker around energy issues, so stay tuned for that. And if you're, if you're passing around the solar god there. And the C-Club website really has good information, good resources, it also has a very comprehensive and, I would say, impressive list of past projects, the C-Club resume over the years. So if you're not familiar with C-Club, I would suggest that you start with the C-Club resume, there's a really nice list of projects, and also the funding sources as well. And that pretty much does it for my report. Anybody have questions? Mr. Sterling?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the C-Club website is C-Club.
It's cookcountylocalenergy.org.
Cook County, localenergy.org. I'm kind of excited about what's going on around the country with studying the thermal water situation that's North House is doing, because they feel that renewables from the sun is unreliable, especially living up here, and wind power, living up here, although you can get it once in a while, and so there's some folks around the country that, oh dear, that are looking into the water type renewable, and so it'll be interesting to follow the progress. When was that installed?
Uh, it was installed. It was installed in 2014, July of 2014. So it's not been very long in terms of data collection. And it has been modified. And Don Grant, who is on the CCLAP board, has been instrumental in it. And solar thermal is something we want to explore for the future, maybe even potentially doing a guide similar to the solar guide. But we'll have to prioritize as we go and see what the board wants to do.
And what does that do for the Folk School? Does it heat the main part of the building?
It's the newest building. The mill shop and the loft building. And you can go and see it. It's in a closet, and there's a lot of electronic doodads and things.
Electronic doodads. I can take anyone to go down and look at it. As you know, I used to volunteer when I had more time. I've been quite a bit at North House. And so it's some serious hot water, seriously fast in there. It's pretty awesome.
Yeah. And I just want to say about solar power, there are a number of solar power users in the county who really don't find that it's a problem drawing power from the sun. I think, in my personal opinion and in my experience, that's a bit of a misconception. There are a number of people, both grid-tied and standalone, that are successful solar PV system users. And so it's exciting, and innovations are made all the time. So yes, CCLAP, we're focused locally. We try not to get outside the area of Cook County. We're really a resource for Cook County residents and people who want to learn more about energy efficiency and renewables.
Ms. Strahling, you have a question?
Just a comment, actually, Madam Chair. It's okay. I have the pleasure of being the board rep on CCLAP board. Commissioner Gamble turned that over to me, which I'm grateful. And for a couple of reasons. One, it's personal in that Sherry and I are building a home business, which through help with CCLAP and the solar energy guide, we're actually have, you know, a plan now going forward this year. And so that's going to help us have more reliable energy, but also cost-effective energy. It's going to actually, it costs out that the payback is fairly soon. So, and for us in Cook County, I mean, we talk about economic development, you know, how do we position ourselves in a way that we can develop our economy? How we take advantage of resources we have? It costs a lot to bring power up here, and it costs our businesses and homeowners a lot. And so to actually have CCLAP here, who's actively helping us to do that, so it's good for our economy, it's good for people who, it's tough to make a living here, you know, and if we can reduce the overall housing costs or business costs for people, then that's a great economic development. So I'm also grateful that Stacy is the new directoress. I have work experience with her before, and I know that CCLAP will be served very well. So, welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Mo. Appreciate it. Any other? Commissioner Gamble?
Yeah, thank you. I think, you know, having been on the board for CCLAP and beginning out and organizations that have goals and hopes for what they would like to accomplish, I think one of the good things that CCLAP contributes to is linking individuals with agencies that can assist them. So REAP and now PACE and other things like that. And we just talked about, you know, with AAOA and Scott coming in and looking at funding to help people with their homes and upgrading and things like that, that our awareness, if there's organizations can help facilitate in, like I said, linking people to organizations that can help them. The financial component is always a challenge, and if the resources that come from organizations that are established and are doing this on a broad scale can help provide some of that financial arm, then I think that has, you know, great benefit. As to solar, we see to our neighbors to the north that they employ solar in many, many applications. And as a board member on the Arrowhead Corrections, we're exploring that for our facility there that we would look at solar. Because of the requirement to be at 20% of all energy supplied by such and such a time that we have energy producers that are looking to try to come through renewables, meet that requirement for renewables, and so they have approached Arrowhead Corrections in regarding to do that, to meet that compliance requirement. But the board right now is looking at, if we do that ourselves, to reduce that cost and have more control over our energy costs would be advantageous. So I've encouraged them to go to Thunder Bay and to look, both at the airport and the other entities up there, because they certainly are making good use of that.
So Stacy, on funding, the county board chose to reduce the CCLAP portion and the EDA funding. How does that affect your REAP program? Because I know the EDA unfortunately had to tell you that you had to take a cut. The EDA is still supporting you to the best of their ability, but how will that affect the REAP program?
The REAP program will be run as it has been in the past. And Virginia is still administering the REAP program right now. And so we, I think CCLAP is committed to running the program and making it work with whatever funds that we have. And we're appreciative of the EDA support. And as Jenny said at the EDA meeting, we'll just have to be more conservative. Okay. And Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Relative to the REAP program, you know, my understanding in the past was that it's to incentivize homeowners to take measures to make their house more energy efficient. And I think that's an educational component. A big part of that was a rebate in the amount of $300 whatever dollars. And I think the incentive should come from the long-term savings, just like any analysis relative to what's the benefit of doing this. I think if we can facilitate getting monies that are available to help them do this at low interest, the advantage is to the homeowner in taking those actions. I think the rebate portion of the $300 that is sort of subsidizing that with taxpayer dollars is where I would say I would create a different model for doing that. I think the incentive comes in that the long-term benefit to you is cost savings.
It's the audit itself, and thank you for your comments, Commissioner Gamble. It's the audit itself that does an assessment of how much money will be saved over the long term. And the services of Mike Senti are worth something, and his training is worth something, and it's important, I believe, to have a local auditor who can make appointments without involving travel. And so, and I can't really speak personally with how effective the audit reimbursement has been working. But I believe that the incentive to do the audit in the first place is often a stumbling block for people. And so if you give them an incentive to actually make that appointment and meet with the auditor and have an expert builder, you know, their undivided attention for three hours talking specifically about your house, then that, I think, helps people make the improvements that are necessary to do that long-term savings. And so I'll be looking for Virginia's report, which will be expected probably by next month sometime, and share your comments with the board. Thank you, Stacy. Anything else? No further questions?
No, I'd just like to thank you for finding different ways to stay in the community in which you grew up in. It's good to have generations stay here. So thank you.
Well, it's my home. I'm not going anywhere.
It's a tough home to stay.
Well, thank you, Commissioners, and Madam Chair for your time, and I'll see you next time.
Thank you.
See you for me.
Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First item I have is to approve the hiring of human resource generalist. We put this in the agenda before I had confirmation that our first choice was able to accept the position, so I'll fill in the blanks for you. Judy Hill was our choice. Julie and I did the interviews. We had eight applicants. We interviewed four of them. By my, my feeling was we had four people who could do the job. But our first choice was Judy Hill, and she accepted, is able to accept the position at a C411, which is the rating that the Personnel Committee put on the job, starting at a step three. And she's able to start the last week of March. So I'm looking for approval to bring her on at 30 hours a week.
Okay, Commissioner Steverton?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you Personnel Committee for doing the search and for this movement to get us normalized so that we can do really good work and essentially save the county because we'll be doing it more efficiently. And we'll also be taking care of our, I guess I'm in favor of this. And because I see this as a movement toward taking care of the staff we already have better and retaining staff. So I see this as a great move forward for us and not necessarily just an expense side on the balance sheet, but also saving us. So, thank you.
Commissioner Strahling?
Thank you. Yes, thank you for that. Normalize and up to speed.
Commissioner Gamble?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Dekirke and I, of course, have, in the previous board, this has been an issue that we've talked about. It was an issue prior to our coming, you know, on the board, the importance of human resource. I think it's been amplified in the absence of having, you know, an individual in that We give lip service to the extent that we can, but it makes it possible to have more tangible evidence of our commitment to our staff, so certainly in support of it.
Commissioner Mo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Also, I just, I support it too, not just for the benefit for our staff, but also what it will allow our county administrator to do, I mean, free him up to do all the leadership and prioritization and strategic planning things that we all hope to accomplish. So with that, I make the motion to approve the hiring of, do we need a hiring of a specific individual?
Yep.
Yeah, of hiring Judy Hill to be the human resource generalist, beginning at a level C411, step three at 30 hours a week.
And I will second that. Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Administrator budget amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I was looking at item C for today, approve the class comp study that we've been working on, I went to Brady's office to review the budget that had been set aside for the class comp study. And at one point, the notes were that there was about $40,000 set aside for a class comp study at some point in the past that had been pared down and has been itemized as $28,000 for a compensation study. A couple other things came up. A, in all of our conversations about this class comp study, I believe we've talked about the importance of the classification component of this study. So we, my ask is to, is itemized out here to add $12,000 to that amount in anticipation that $28,000 is not going to get us a classification compensation study. Up to $15,000 in legal fees to help us with our labor negotiations, if we need that. I don't know that we're going to. I had a conversation with Diane Ebert, and I said, can you give me an estimate? And she says, no. I said, if I throw you out a round number of $15,000, will that cover it? And she said, I think that would cover any contingency we could come up with. So we didn't just pick those numbers out of the dark. And then the third number on there is $3,000 to bring AMC staff up to do a lean facilitator training with some, with, I'm assuming somewhere between eight and 12 of our staff members. And these would not be department heads. These would be lead employees in various departments. And this would be not only continuing the lean process that we started last October and bringing it to reality in Cook County, but it would also be a keystone in what I want to build on for a leadership program for our employees. So that's the ask, is to carry $30,000 forward and to tag those items for that. We had a conversation at our last meeting about, you know, where we thought we were at the end of 2015. And I'll say that if we earmark $30,000 out of that, it, $30,000, it's taking $30,000 from where we think we would be at end of 2015. So if we itemize those funds, if we identify a place for those funds, then we take them out of the unrestricted amount that could go back to fund balance. There was roughly $60,000 in unspent personnel and administrator last year simply because I didn't get it until July. So that's where it's coming from, but it's not free money. It's coming from what would otherwise go back to unrestricted fund balance.
Okay, Commissioner Mo?
Could change this. Yeah, it's like, Madam Chair...
If you don't approve this 30, then yes, you can change your...
So Brady, if I take my checkbook out here, and we have...
This is going to go back to you here.
Basically, plus or minus $208,000 that would have gone to fund balance based on our last estimate, so...
That is exactly what that's for.
And so instead, then we would have, we would have $178,000 theoretically going into our fund balance that I can put on my ledger here. That would be, your estimate correct?
Yeah.
Initial...
Just to create...
Initial...
92 to 8 to 80? No, not negative. We had a positive because of things that were not used in 2015. There's money to go in.
It was in our fund balance.
Yep. Do you have other questions?
No, no, I just wanted to make sure my checkbook was up. And in all seriousness, I mean, these are things that we need to accomplish. Actually having money set aside for potential legal fees, that seems like a novel idea, Not that we're leading with our chinny or anything.
I'm going to remember that during the next budget process.
Oh, I'm sure you will. But I have it all written down. So anyway, I have no other questions. Thanks for being proactive here.
Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, I agree that the classification and the comp, I think we're looking at budget and incrementally how we, you know, bite this off. We're taking steps to follow through on what our commitment is. We might be, on the financial side, aggressive, but from the standpoint of just logic and common sense, it makes sense to both the lean and the classification and the comp. These are things that we need to do to bring integrity to what our words have said. I am, while I think the novel idea of the legal fees as an inclusion there, I, as part of the negotiating team, would not like to see us get there only as a last-ditch measure. Because I think that we need to be informed and resolute on where we stand on these things with a response that gives our reasoning as to why we offer what we offer. And I would hate... And I, I would hate to see it go to that. Moving forward, the allocation of these funds for these other things that we've identified to date will put us in a position where that will become less than the rearview mirror.
Commissioner Storey?
Thank you Madam Chair. Well, I would support all three areas, especially the lean training since we've been through it. I think it's good to bring it to another level. So, I support it all.
Commissioner Seabertson?
Thank you Madam Chair. So, I'm just asking a little clarification because we talked about carrying forward thirty from 2015. Is, and which this equals, the twelve plus fifteen plus three equals thirty. Are we also, is that twenty-eight that you talked about then going to be carried forward as well? Or is that, is thirty to cover all of that?
Commissioner Seabertson, yes, the twenty-eight thousand dollars is included in, in an administrative line item that has already been carried forward.
Okay, so the twenty is additional to this thirty?
That was.
But, but that's already in the budget in a, in a other sum. A number that included that twenty-eight thousand dollars that's already carried forward. Yes.
And that twenty-eight will go to the classification studies so that it can be back to that forty number? So, actually forty plus fifteen equals thirty?
That's the intention, yes.
Mr. Gable?
Yeah, thank you Madam Chair. And to that, that question that, we, when we had this discussion before in the previous board, it was an incremental thing. So, we looked at the broader scope. We thought, well, because of the budgetary constraints, let's take it one at a time. And what we're saying is that we, having this carryover in funds because the money had realized, let's invest it in, in move, accelerate that, you know? And so, that's sort of how we're, we're.
And just on Commissioner Gable's suggestion of fifteen thousand, we are not in legal mode with our groups at this point. It's just.
It's a, it's a question for that purpose.
Yeah, and we, we hope to not go there.
Thank you Madam Chair. As a point of clarification on that, what I didn't want to do, and I was talking with Brady, is I didn't want to come and ask for three thousand and then come and ask for twelve and then come and ask for fifteen.
Thank you.
So, we tried to anticipate what this year would be. That fifteen thousand dollars is a marker that I would say that the negotiation team would be involved with making that decision and, and not just myself.
Okay, there's no further questions? Can I get a motion? I will make the motion to approve moving thirty thousand from the 2015 excess budget. What is that one that they said at the hospital? Unplanned.
Opportunities, unplanned opportunities?
Unplanned opportunities. Can I get a?
It's not planned.
Yes, unplanned opportunities. Can I get a second on that?
I'll, I'll second it with, with the comment that this is monies that were realized because of savings that we're investing in 2016.
Yes.
And on that basis, it's, 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 it's following through on things that we've committed to previously and because of the realized savings, we're, we're going to invest that now.
Investing in our staff. Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, class comp study.
Thank you Madam Chair. I, I know we've had a conversation to discuss this. It's been reviewed at several levels. Commissioner Gable pointed out two formatting errors, punctuation error and a formatting error that will be corrected. I think there was a, in one of the first lists, one of the bullet items was not numbered, so the numbering sequence is off, but I'll correct that. And I think he had a comment on a use of a semicolon in one place and we'll make those corrections. But generally, I think that this, this RFP has been through a, a good process and, and I think it's, other than those two corrections, ready to go.
Okay, discussion. We'll start with Commissioner Seabertson.
Thank you Madam Chair. I, I, I think the proposal looks really good. It covers a broad area and, and gives some historical context and geographic context and I just, and as badly needed, I'm very much in favor.
Mr. Storey, for your work. Mr. Gable?
Yeah, thank you Madam Chair. Yeah, I think that I want to just affirm appreciation for Jeff's work in, in looking at comparing and, and doing the background work necessary to be sure that, that we've covered our basis on this and identifying what we want. And also, the involvement of Personnel Committee in being able to look at this. So, it, it's been a, a process that's followed, just a, a healthy process of contributing to the document. So, hopefully, we'll get a firm out there. There's a lot of our, our peers in other counties that are going through this and it's, it's an important critical component part.
Commissioner Moore?
Thank you Madam Chair. Yeah, I want to thank, thank Jeff for all your work on this background information, making sure that we have a, a very good proposal here. I also want to thank Commissioner Gable, whose eye for detail is, is exceptional. Has definitely more patience for that than I do. We bring different strengths and weaknesses to the board and this is one, one of his that I'm grateful for. And just to review just quickly for anybody who's watching. So, we have, in the Personnel Committee, we have a lot of questions about how our staff compare their, the, to, their pay compares other counties, how they, how they compare with, between departments, within departments. There's questions of fairness. Some have been classified recently, some haven't been classified for a long time. And so, this is going to put us at, at a real, give us information back as to how we can standardize that. And there's no, no preconceived notions about what this is going to bring back other than expertise and comparing us to other counties. So, we can then make, we can, two things. We'll get, we'll get, we'll get proposals back that we, we can then evaluate. And then, once this is done, we'll be presented with some very concrete decisions and steps that we can take. So, I'm really grateful for it. It's big work, very important. Just glad that we're moving forward. And I would, at, at Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we approve the, the request for proposal for a employee classification and compensation study.
Can I get a second? Second. Seabertson, Commissioner Gable, you got another comment?
Yeah, just a comment. Jeff, in looking back, when's the last time we did this?
Nineteen eighty-six, I think.
Commissioner Gable, I cannot find that we have done this.
Yeah.
I can find that the current classification system was adopted in nineteen eighty-five, but I cannot find any evidence that a full study has been done since then.
And, and, and thank you. The point is, is that we get busy doing the business of governance and a lot of things that are foundational to creating a healthy work environment and demonstrating that we value our staff gets sort of left in, in the midst of just doing. And, and the steps that we've, you know, taken today are steps that are ensuring that, that we have a broader perspective and the importance of doing that. So, having a Resource Generalist and having a county administrator, these are putting in place the piece of the puzzle that they'll come up with a better outcome so that we can be more proactive as opposed to reactionary, wait till things get to the point that we have to build, rebuild our foundations. So.
Further comment? Is there any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there any discussion on correspondence? If not, we did meeting notes, meeting updates, Commissioner updates, Commissioner Gable is taking Commissioner Seabertson's spot on the radio. So, we will take a ten-minute break to move the tables around and then we will go into our Legislative Conference Agenda Workshop. So. For your district.
Who's going to stand up or is it?
What do you guys use for envelopes when you're sending courses? What do you use for envelopes when you send? Which department's stationery do you choose?
We have envelopes in our office.
Okay, and it says, okay, I shall go. And who's a big user of conversation?
No, I think, you know, I just think it's.
And thanks for doing the reading.
Yeah, there were high fives.
I'm trying to keep that day open, so. San Antonio.
Yep, so I do a dance.
So. Just complimentary meeting.
Is this an intervention? Should we put one chair in the middle and this is?
Yes. I think it's Frank's turn. Really? Which Commissioner gets to get a little of the circle?
No, we were talking about which department. It wasn't there for, yeah, so it's therefore was meant to be assigned work.
What happened? Did you miss the mat meeting?
It wasn't. I don't anticipate this is going to take that long.
Here is a meeting at one. Third goal.
Pardon?
Yeah, he just said he doesn't participate. It took him too long.
There's, there's the possibility that we simply confirm the list that we had last meeting in light of the additional background information from Minnesota counties and take this.
And, and if it's a matter of prioritizing, you know, those that are there. And for Commissioners that sit on policy, AMC policy committees that pertain to that particular, that that, that's, I'll be supporting in that.
I know Sue had some handouts upstairs, so I'm going to run upstairs and see if I can find those. I know she was also running into a time crash.
Molly, is that your parents' property that's on sixty-one?
Uh huh.
I've never noticed the mailbox until now. I don't know if they just redid their name on it.
Yeah, their neighbors, the neighbors put together that sign and we're kind enough to include the name written on it.
So, our neighbors did on gunpoint, all the previous owners, there was a huge post with their names and our neighbor, thank God it was our neighbor, took everybody else's name off and put ours off.
Wow, you can do tables fast.
Yeah.
Yeah, why do you know?
Getting used to the table again.
I raided Julie's candy dish. Keep us going at least for an hour. Awesome. I hope.
These are starting to look like foodie fish cans. They're getting smaller and smaller.
These are the kind you throw at a parade.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, they can still poke your eye out.
I was loading on the, the information for, we talked about it in the AEOA, the monies that are for the tribes to be able to purchase properties. And so, I'm wondering if there's any correlation between Susie Island, you know, issue. I see those as two separate issues, but they're, two things are on the landscape.
And she's been in the works for ever, hasn't she?
I'm not sure why.
So, what's happening though?
Why they did not want the local jurisdiction to move to federal, to have it move to federal jurisdiction? Because that's their intent to have Susie Island come under federal jurisdiction.
Right, right. Well, I think it's, and probably it has a lot more to do with just the visualization of nature conservancy. You know, that's, it's. Nature conservancy is doing some pretty amazing work in this whole region. So, I think they've been doing their, they've been doing their. Yeah.
Yeah. You're piercing. But yeah, it is kind of ironic to wait. Enjoy.
There's your share too. Here's your share.
This is what I get for lunch?
That's what you get.
We need to invest in buying you some new pants.
Isn't that distracting?
They're not distracting. I just knew you were going to catch a cold.
My allergies.
That's right.
Issues at that time couldn't go, so.
When I worked at the college and kids would come in with stuff like that, I mean, someone came in with the bra ripped out of the pants. And old May had, was like sixty-five, seventy years old. She was the supervisor on the line and she'd just come and walk right up to the guys and say,
My grandfather. What'd he say to me once? I think your pants are hungry.
So, what I did, when mine ripped out that way, is I took it, took different colored bandanas and sewed it right in there. It was a little fashion statement.
Dynamic bandana material patches that you ever.
Could have, Trent Center, always. Sue is coming down.
Right now? Right this second?
Should we start without Sue or should we?
Yeah, we can.
Okay.
Well, so, last board meeting, we talked about, we kind of discussed what had been the, our discussion, our legislative topic for St. Louis County, so we had five things that we had been discussing, you know, over the course of the last few months that we wanted to highlight, and so Jeff had sent out an email about that.
That's it.
Yeah, there you go, you better.
All right, Jeff, back and roll.
So in, this conversation is simply really to affirm what this board's priorities are as we go down to the legislative conference in a couple of weeks, and at our meeting, at our last board meeting, we put forward a list to include county program aid, several items within Health and Human Services, including child protective twenty-four hour access, state reimbursement for auto home placements, and, and the change at the, at the state level for service providers for Medicare recipients and the follow-up from that, Sue Foote is gonna be down shortly and share some information from her professional associations and handouts as far as what they're doing regarding legislative session, transportation funding was another general item, Safe and Secure Courthouse Initiative was presented at our last meeting and we agreed that that would be something we'd be willing to forward, and then exemption for small business owners on the first five hundred thousand dollars of property value when it comes to assessments or taxing, so those were the, those were the list of items that we had, then included in your packet was the full list from Association of Minnesota Counties, the sample from St. Louis County of what their legislative agenda looks like, which included something we'd probably want to consider for next year, things that are carryovers, things that are new this year, and just kind of highlights some, some things in different ways, and then the other item that was forwarded by Commissioner Storley was a legislative protocol that St. Louis County has adopted and is something that we would probably want to, again, I hate to throw them there, but the Personnel Committee gets a lot of work on this, is this something, would it be under Personnel Committee, maybe we would throw it under the Bylaws Committee, we talked about establishing at our last meeting, and say, is this, is this a way that we want to organize our voice as a, as a governing board, and, and that, that protocol talks about elected officials and department heads and people who are speaking for the county, and when they're speaking for the county, that they would support the positions that the county has taken, and at the same time differentiating between when people are acting for themselves as opposed to acting in their position, so I would say probably the best thing to do is, is consider something along the protocol there when we're looking at our, at our bylaws, and I think that was a good example of how that's broken out, so generally we had our, we had our short list of legislative items developed last week, we've got some new information now, Sue wants to share some of the, of the information from her professional organizations and how they're working with this, so I, let's let her do that now.
Okay, thanks. You okay with that?
So, I'm going to hand these around this way, take, there's three copies.
Okay, and they're all different.
The first two look alike, but they're different, so if you could each take one of those, that would be helpful, this information that I'm sharing is from the Minnesota Association of County Social Service Administrators, and then also from the Local Public Health Association, both of those entities are affiliates with AMC, as you probably know, and so we put together our priorities, and I wanted to just tell you what my, or what I think in regards to these various issues, because I know you have a lot of other things, you don't just have Health and Human Services to look at and to identify as priorities, so I thought it might be helpful if I just pointed out a couple of these on here that I think really would have the most impact on Cook County, and these will probably be talked about in much more detail at the Health and Human Services Policy Committee, but then at least we had a head that one, that would work well. Okay, so, we have what we call our legislative initiatives in MAXIS, and those are basically three areas, administrative simplification, investments in technology, and aligning resources with expected outcomes, so some of these things that you see in the initiatives are just more detailed than what you see on the priorities page, and I'm just going to point out a couple of those here, so if you look at the first one, the legislative initiatives, under simplification, one of those that would be help, very helpful to us is the second one, authorizing case management services through use of two-way interactive video, that would mean that we could do case management through the video system and get reimbursed for it, and that would save our people a lot of travel as well and costs, and it would be very convenient, and so we would appreciate being able to do that for sure, under investments in technology, I would suggest clearly that you talk about funding improvements to the Mensure system to manage MA and integrate other human service programs, and I looked at both of these and tried to decide which one I thought says it best, and, I really think that under improvements in the Mensure eligibility system, the one that's on priorities here, that, that is, all of that is extremely important to us, as you heard me and Allison McIntyre talk last week, this is just a tremendous burden for us and for all counties, and if they could somehow fix this, that would be great, and what's supposed to happen in March of 2016 is there's supposed to be what they call a periodic data match in these systems, and we are clearly asking that that be postponed, that would just make more work and more of a problem if the state does not act and act legislation to postpone that, so, any comments? Questions?
Just a comment on, kind of the investments in technology, that third bullet point, which is supporting the Department of Human Services to modernize human services technology system, that's a pretty broad-based statement, but I think it encompasses all the other things we're looking at above, we've got to do something to get it handled on this so that it's efficient and not so encumbering the rest of staff.
But if they demand that to be done and they don't fund it, I mean, they've already demanded technological systems for us that are alleged.
They throw a lot of money at this and not.
Yeah, and this, I appreciate your comment, Gary, because I think it's important for you to know this, that this is something that we've been trying to cooperate with DHS on for several years now, but there's, they have some additional funding that they got from the feds, and what they're hoping is that they will start another new system, planning for a new system in 2017, and, because they need to spend those dollars, and so that does not necessarily talk about fixing the other system.
And they can't use the dollars to fix the current system.
That's what we were told last month.
I don't, I don't like the word that you're saying, which you're just saying, you're just carry about, because they need to spend those dollars.
I know, I, we're.
They need to fix the system.
We've been so frustrated, and last month at our healthcare committee was when we really first heard about this, and then in our legislative committee, we, they talked about it, and I think politically, if we wanted to get some of these other things done, we had to put this on here, but I'm not saying that I would support that, I don't, I can't support that.
Draw more attention to the other item to keep attention away from the bottom line.
Yes, because we really need to fix what we have, if that's.
We don't have, we don't have the luxury to look at what we did today because we're trying to incrementally do what we need to do, and yet, so we got money, well, let's spend it, how about we just, there.
I know. Frank's gonna have an aneurysm over here, so.
The feds are borrowing forty cents on the dollar to do this, you know, stuff like this.
So, I'm not sure of all the technicalities of that, so far we've just heard the big picture, which is, we want to keep modernizing our systems, so let's keep moving forward with that.
But that means going back to a paper calendar, something that works, let's do it.
Paper applications, processing.
So Sue, so you, your professional estimation, is this MAXIS system, is it just, is it unsalvageable? Is it so?
The MAXIS, M-A-X-I-S system, um, yeah, pretty much.
So, and then, and so.
I mean, we're still working in it because we haven't transferred some of the cases into the new system because the new system doesn't function like it was supposed to.
And the new system is unsalvageable, do you think, or do you think it's fixable? What's the new system called again, I'm sorry?
It's called, it's CUREM, but the official name is MET, uh, it's on one of these things, Minnesota.
Eligibility?
Eligibility system, yes, no, Mensure, Mensure eligibility system, because it's separate from MAXIS, so our workers right now are working in both programs.
And so this system, and I know this is, this is diversion, but this is, this is hopeless, do you think, or, I mean?
I, I don't know, if, all of the things about technology, I guess, but from my understanding is that this system was working very well in some of the other states, and that's one of the reasons they picked it, you have to remember that this is the second system, the first one was a few years before this that they purchased, and it didn't even, we didn't even start working in it because it functioned so poorly, so they scrapped that, and that was a lot of money as well.
Another component of it is that we chose to work independently and develop our own system, and so whether we bid off more than we chew, I mean, if the poop's in the pudding, but this first point under here, investments in technology, funding improvements to the Mensure system, we've been funding improvements to that Mensure system, and we're not getting close, if I were sitting there discussing it, if we've identified the problems and how to fix it, then money should go to do that, which is what this point is saying, as opposed to having on the horizon that there'll be new monies and how about we start over, and I think you need to have that context to understand this.
From what I understand and what we've been told is they are, they, the Mensure Board and DHS is committed to keeping this, this system, this Mensure technology system, and they've already got so much in it that they want to keep it working, when I say that CUREM, which is the, the other name of Minnesota eligibility system, it was working in other states, I think our primary difference, as I understand it, was that we combined our private insurance and our public insurance in the same entity, and most states were just using it for their medical assistance part, so I don't know if that's, you know, anything that anybody can impact or not, because that's while the system is currently set up with a Mensure Board that oversees the system.
Then we have an election and the newly elected representatives will change it all again for us.
But is it really our role to reinvent the system, or is it our role just to point out?
How it's working or not.
How it's working.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, Sue.
Okay, so on the back of that page, under aligning resources with expected outcomes, I think clearly, one that we've talked about much in our area is the second one there, restructuring the payment withhold framework in the child protection staffing appropriation, and that's where, where appropriated a certain amount of money, and then we need to earn the other twenty percent, and as you saw in, in our last meeting, we earned ten percent of it, but not the other ten percent, so that money that's left over that counties don't earn is going to the counties that are earning and meeting their outcomes, and so what this is asking is, let's take a look at that formula, and if counties are having difficulty meeting that, let's give those counties the additional funds.
And assistance, yes.
It's, it makes me smile to have to say that, but it's really how it is supposed to work, so those counties that met the performance outcomes will get our seventy-five hundred dollars that we did not earn, so talking about changing that, I think, is important, let's give incentives to people for doing well, let's encourage people to do well, I guess, and then the next one is, and has been a topic in this area that I, with, in this county, is the one that calls increasing access and funding for basic sliding fee childcare assistance program, we clearly are, we overspent our childcare assistance funding in 2015 by a couple thousand dollars, and we will have about the same in 2016, however, we have established a waiting list, so we now have eleven families on a waitlist for this, the way that you earn additional, or get additional allocations is by your waiting list, so clearly, we need to fund this, if we don't have good childcare and we can't support childcare providers by paying for that, we can't, we don't have people to work, we don't have a workforce, and we have a problem with that right now in our town.
Sue, I've heard that there are childcares that have kids in them who, their parents are delinquent because they don't, they haven't, they haven't gotten up the queue yet, so they can't afford it, so the childcares themselves are floating these people, these families at a loss by, by not wanting to kick them out, the kids out, isn't that?
There is a situation, there is one situation that I know of like that, and I have talked with, we're working with them, and I talked to one of their board members last week, and clearly they need to take a look at their policies as well, I mean, I understand when it's, might be your neighbor or whatever, it's hard to say, we can't care for your child anymore, but, you know, there's not anything we really as an agency can do about that unless you want to put county dollars into raise our basic sliding fee dollar allocation, so we can start distributing it to some of these families on the waitlist, but we, and it's hard because we encourage people to sign up, you know, for the basic sliding fee childcare, because we need the waitlist, but then we have to tell them, thanks for filling out all the paperwork, but right now you're really not eligible, but maybe you will be somewhere down the road, and we can't remove anyone from the, from the current list or the current program who wants to stay, and we have to be able to also provide for all of the children in one household, so let's say there's an infant seeking childcare, and then there's an older child that's in school, so then come summertime, we have to make sure we have enough funds for that family to cover their infant care plus the care of that child that's not going to be in school over summer, so it's. that, we can't, we don't have people to work, we don't have a workforce and we have a problem with that right now in our town.
Sue, I've heard that there are childcares that have kids in them who, their parents are delinquent because they don't, they haven't, they haven't gotten up the queue yet, so they can't afford it. So the childcares themselves are floating these people, these families at a loss by, by not wanting to kick them out, the kids out, isn't that?
There is a situation, there is one situation that I know of like that and I have talked with, we're working with them and I've talked to one of their board members last week and clearly they need to take a look at their policies as well. I mean, I understand when it's, might be your neighbor or whatever, it's hard to say we can't care for your child anymore, but you know, there's not anything we really as an agency can do about that unless you want to put county dollars into raise our basic sliding fee dollar allocation, so we can start distributing it to some of these families on the waitlist. But we, and it's hard because we encourage people to sign up, you know, for the basic sliding fee childcare because we need the waitlist, but then we have to tell them, thanks for filling out all the paperwork, but right now you're really not eligible, but maybe you will be somewhere down the road. And we can't remove anyone from the, from the current list or the current program who wants to stay and we have to be able to also provide for all of the children in one household. So let's say there's an infant seeking childcare and then there's an older child that's in school, so then come summertime, we have to make sure we have enough funds for that family to cover their infant care plus the care of that child that's not going to be in school over summer. So it's, it's not easy to estimate.
And then if they have a child while they have one in the system, you have to cover the new child.
Yes, yes.
And so some of the problem is that people are saying they're going to get funded by the county and they're telling their daycare provider that they're waiting for the county and it's not that we're not funding them, it's that they're not, they don't meet the numbers at this point.
Right, and they might not meet the eligibility standards either, so that's another thing, you know, because this is based on, on income, unless you've been in the Minnesota Family Investment Program, which is the cash assistance program, and you meet a certain, you've worked in there, you're working your way off the program, you are entitled to keep childcare and so part of those spots are given to you.
So that's another pool of dollars.
Yes.
And so, yeah, there was a rumor going around for a while that the county was behind and it's not, it's a different situation.
It's a different part of it.
However, by, by us supporting this would indirectly deal with that other issue, that we have families that are in need of childcare assistance that aren't getting it because it's on the list. So if the allocation per county were higher, then we would have, then you'd be able to make progress on that list.
We would hope so and again, that would depend on, the person would need to supply us with all of the information and sometimes that becomes a barrier for some people is that they don't want to give us all their income information and all of that, but provided they do that and they meet all the criteria, yes, it would help us.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sue.
Just one other note on that, aligning resources with the expected outcomes, that the effective oversight of opiate treatment, I mean, we're, we're seeing the effects of that not only as it affects families and children, but it affects the mental health of both children and adults. And in the seminar yesterday, they noted that 47,000 Americans died of opiate abuse last year. And this is, this is an increasing problem because of choices and.
And in many cases, people start out with the opiate prescription drug treatment and then that's when they're moving on to the heroin, which has really become a problem as well.
And she could argue it's not really a choice.
Yeah.
Sue, do we, do we transport, you know, does the county transport people to methadone program?
We don't have anyone doing, on that right now, no, but there are many counties that are transporting a lot of people to methadone clinics every day, they have to get treatment every day. Right now, we don't have anyone. These are all, in my estimation, important, you know, I value all of this work, but I'm trying to post them out for you because I know you also have to look at county program aid and all those other ones too, so.
And I think that, you know, the awareness is hugely important so we're informed, but to the extent that it requires funding, we, we know because we get informed, we're told about things, but we only have so much money. So those things that are on these, you know, priorities lists that require funding are a little more challenging than those that are just putting systems in, in place that enable better responses.
And if you look at the, the green cover sheet, the LPHA Legislative Priorities, in that case, we, I would say, increasing the MA reimbursement for family home visiting would be very important for our program. Right now, we're funding, we do get reimbursement for our visits to people that are on MA, but it doesn't begin to cover the cost of the visit and the transportation to the house and it would be, we're using grants to do that and then still billing, but if we had a higher rate, that would be most helpful. And then again, the top one is restoring local public health grant funding, which is, again, dollars were taken away for several years and then last year we received an increase. For us here in Cook County, that was about a couple thousand dollars. And just so you know, part of that local public health grant fund that we get goes to support environmental at Mitch, Mitch Ederson's position.
On the reimbursements for family home visits, this is one of the issues again that came out yesterday in discussions at the workshop at NICO was that this one-size-fits-all is problematic and we, we know that as, as a county that is different in, in how that family visit applies to us than in an urban area where we've got a, you know, a facility that goes out small distance and the economies of scale and everything else enter into that. And I think we've talked about that in other areas that state legislatures need, need to understand that, that the difference between our experience here in Cook County and the experience in Hannover or Dakota County. And therefore, if there is something that builds into that, that awareness, it would be more of an equitable distribution of tax dollars.
So, unless you have other questions?
I do have a question. So Sue, the, a thing we had on our priority list was, was supporting the tax bill that had, they had April, the state taking care of out of home placements for Indian children. And that was in a tax bill, I think, last year that didn't pass.
Yes.
And I'm assuming that that would be something that you would be supportive of, I mean, that's a huge, we've been addressing, that's a huge financial issue for the county.
I, yes, it, it is, certainly that I would be supportive of any additional funding that we could receive. You don't see it as a priority here because it's, again, it's not in the health services bill and I think that, and we know that statewide, there's a large disparity of persons of color that are in out of home placement, but this is specific to Indian children. So clearly that would be helpful, if it came to the counties.
If I ask a question this way, given your experience and awareness where we're at, if, if we had one dollar, where would you like to see that dollar go? If we, if, and that assessment would be based upon where the impact would be most appreciated. So that would sort of help us as commissioners have a context to understand, if there's any money to be allocated, where do you think it would have the best benefit to us?
Um, wow, that's a tough one. I would say fixing MinSure, the one, because that will help.
Because we've gone from 30 minutes to an hour to 10 hours.
That would free of staff.
That would help people, our staff, and it would help people get their insurance hopefully straightened out, so I think that's important. The other one that I would say is to put it, dollars to home visiting, because that clearly is a prevention strategy, because if you invest early on, that could potentially prevent future children being at risk for placement. So that would be my comment.
Thank you.
I have a question about the logistics of going to the conference to help you. We do have scheduled policy committees and Health and Human Services are on that. There's also a workshop on mental health, there's also one on Public Health Act. So going to the committee.
Somebody from here can do that and then somebody else go to public safety, whatever.
We have a commissioner appointed to public health and they're a voting member. So the rest of us could go, we just couldn't vote on the subject.
Right, right.
If we're talking about workshops, if we go to the policy discussion, the policy discussion's pretty well defined, but the workshops are a matter of.
Yeah, I'm the public health for the policy, but if there was a recommended from these priorities, we can probably deduce what the recommended.
To learn more about the workshop. Yeah, okay, I would clearly say go to the mental health related one. That is where there's going to be much, a lot of changes in the next few years and certainly some of that is going to come back counties eventually, especially in any persons that we have to place in a long-term facility that the state operates. The county's been asked to pay more and more of those costs for each person and that can add up really quickly with just one person placed. So I would say go to the mental health and what was the other one? There's one for Local Public Health Act. Oh, I think that might be helpful for Commissioner Seibertson to go to because she serves as the representative on the community health board and that would give her a little bit more understanding of what that act means and how counties are supposed to implement it. In terms of funding, it's really miniscule to our whole budget, the local public act funding that we get, so getting more would be good, but usually if you get more in one area, you're going to get less somewhere else.
Another thing I think to be mindful of, which we may all be aware of, is that AMC, just by the nature of AMC with 87 counties, has to find a collective voice which sometimes doesn't best represent our interests. So as we sit on those policy, you know, speak respectfully to our position as opposed to blending in, I think is an important thing to be mindful of.
It, it is and certainly that happens in these organizations that my members of too, is that some of these things are clearly more of a focus for possibly metro or larger counties and some are, can help all of us across the board, but you, I've sat at some of those committees or at some of those AMC meetings too and sometimes it's who speaks the loudest, as far as what ends up.
Or who speaks at all.
Being the priority, yes, sometimes people are not speaking at all, it's very true.
I know back when I was first elected on general, there was two counties in southern Minnesota that strongly believed that there were a lot of people manipulating the voting system and they wanted to eliminate voter mail-in ballots completely.
How?
And.
They took over the whole thing.
They actually cornered me in a women's bathroom stall because I was willing to speak out for our county and, and it didn't pass because I was willing to speak up and a lot of our rural areas up here have mail-in ballot. Well, when it was going through the steps of the year, because we talk about it all year, it starts in March and keeps going, most of the people in this area are farmers and they were in the fields and they couldn't make it to the meetings. So I was the lone voice, even though I knew I had the other commissioners and that when it came to voting day, we'd be okay, but there was no one else speaking, so.
Speaking up is important and it can be intimidating, you know, because it's a big round of people.
I don't know if there's many shy people here.
I'm only shy if I don't know what I'm saying. Yeah, helps to know what you're saying before you do speak up. I do more damage than I do.
So if you don't know what you're saying, shh.
Yeah. I found myself in that place sometimes, I can tell you.
Thank you, Sue.
So, well, thank you all and for anything that you can do, I would be most appreciative. And truly, I'm not going to be there this year, but if you have questions, feel free to either email or call and I'll try to get whatever information I can to help you.
We'll carry your torch even though you're off the island. I said, we'll carry your torch even though you're off the island.
I think the big thing is just, I mean, first you try to appeal to, to reason and an, and an element of equity. I mean, that's what you try to appeal to, but I'm just saying when it came to parks and trails, that's what I thought, well, why not just say, hey, you know, why not have respect and empathy for each other? And it's like, no, we want all that money, we, we don't even think you exist. And this, so I say, appeal on that basis initially, but then, as you suggest, you just tend to expect us to stand your ground and just say, hey.
You know, and I, I truly can say this, that if, we're not the only county, but if you can have a county voices, voices together that says, you're all going to be hiring more financial workers if this system doesn't get fixed, because there is no way, I told you, you know, last week, that we can keep doing this, because now it's also starting to impact our social service clients too, because if they don't maintain their MA eligibility, they will go off waivers and then if we go off the waivers, then that stops services for them, so, yeah, it, it just keeps going backwards.
And that was part that helped with mail-in ballot, because when I started explaining to southern Minnesota, we don't have voter stations to take on and they had to be handicap accessible, so I'm like, well, if anyone's willing to allocate a million dollars to Cook County to set up voter stations, then I'll back you. But until then, and so when you come in and say, this is, this is going to affect our county and all of your counties and this is the financial impact.
Yeah.
So, the outcome of this, Molly left me some, some language, it said, the outcome of, of this workshop would be for us to, to approve an oral resolution that we'll draft saying this board is going to bring these issues to, to that conference. So what, in addition to the items, the Child Protective Services, the 24-hour access that we're, we're not, we think there's a better way around that, the reimbursement for out of home placements and, and still redressing the, the change in service providers and the ongoing costs that's put, put forward for us, would it be reasonable for us to put a statement in that we're supporting the initiatives of LPHA and the county social service administrators and ask Sue to give us two or three highlights to include?
I would say in particular, yeah.
So we, we're, we're supporting the initiatives of these organizations in particular.
As it relates to our county.
These two or three items as they specifically relate to our county, so, so my ask is that we'll include that in our language here, but I'm also asking Sue to give me a brief summary of the conversation we just had, so I can include that in our resolution.
And I would say, yeah, Sue has identified by our public, you know, who's been in her position for 10 years.
Decades.
You can get out of going.
Over than you are.
No, I know.
And it's leaving, if you don't pass it.
I've been here, yeah.
And just so you know, she's quitting.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, she's quitting.
We're losing.
So, I don't want to put you on the spot, but is that reasonable to, to give a summary of, of your conversation here, because I, I was trying to keep up and I'm like, it's just not going to happen.
I know.
So just to clarify what you just said, Jeff, so we have, we're going to have priorities and then also this, specifically these things and then subgroups?
Add it to these.
Yeah, that's right, so there'll be, so we have, but, but some of these, some of our original priorities are what we just talked about here.
They are, so they won't be redundant, but what I want to do is if, if you had an opportunity to look at the list that St. Louis County put in.
Yeah.
I would imagine that we'd end up, instead of having a bulleted list with five lines, that we would throw some meat behind those, you know, how they, they said, the county program, program aid was pretty much straight out of AMC and then the last sentence is, is the recommendations would have this impact on Cook County. That's, that's what they've added to that. So if we identify the list, then we can take a place and we can say, we believe this would have this impact to Cook County.
I wonder if, if we wouldn't be stronger by being more specific than being general. Here's the point, if we say we support this organization, this organization, this organization, AMC's platform, whatever else, we could just do that without really knowing why we're doing it.
But he's saying specifically, he's saying we support these.
No, I understand that, yeah, I'm saying the more specificity that we can bring to it, it means that we, we know why we're saying what we're saying.
And that's what he's asking for.
I understand that, but I'm just saying that, that if, you know how it is, what I look at and what I read, if I can, if I can be bulleted specific and then provide the additional information that supports it, we can do that, but if, if it gets to be such a lengthy document because we're inclusive.
So much stuff.
Then, then it, I think it might, it might not be so targeted.
It's a one pager, isn't it?
Right, and I would encourage us to keep, to keep the, our list as small as and simple as possible. Back to Gary's point, he asked, he asked Sue, where the dollar would best be spent, not that we're only going to highlight, I mean, I think from our list and our discussions, Health and Human Services is going to be the largest numerical topics that we have, you know, three or four, whatever it is, but if we get, if we get too many, then, then our voice gets drowned out, you know, when we, we sit down and talk to our legislators and other legislators that we're going to get to talk to and hopefully the governor's office, it'd be nice for us to have, you know, things you can count on your hand, pull them, you know, and if we get beyond that, then.
Because you really don't have much time to deliver your message.
No, uh-uh. Yeah, at, at the same point, I mean, we can say the bullet items is county program aid, but we know that county program aid means in 2015, Minnesota counties' recommendation.
Yeah, as referenced.
As, as referenced, so, so that's, that's what I'm asking for, I'm not saying, you know, I mean, generally we support Minnesota counties because we're a member. Generally, we support these other organizations because we're a member, but specifically, these are the things that we think would have the biggest impact for us.
Exactly right, and this specific, I think is.
I'm saying the same thing.
And you could, yes, I think you are saying the same thing. And you can lift some of this language right out of there, but clearly I would say, you know, the, the restructuring of the payment withhold for child protection and to look at the 24/7 coverage is important. I think basic sliding fee childcare allocation is, is kind of going to continue to be important here. If we keep the wage, wages as they are in the county. If we keep the wage, wages as they are in the county, daycare is getting more and more expensive, and we can't get employees if we can't pay daycare.
So, so we, on our previous list, we identified three items within Health and Human Services. Do we want to keep it?
Is that, was that last year?
Last week, we had a conversation briefly.
Oh, okay.
It was the start of last year, but it was mostly, mostly informed by the discussions that we've already had.
Oh, I see, okay, I'm sorry to introduce that.
So it's Child Protective Service 24-hour access, state reimbursement of out-of-home placement, and state of Minnesota change of service providers for Medicare recipients. Is there one you want to drop?
Well...
What was the last one? State of Minnesota change of service providers for Medicare recipients.
Which is already in the past. I mean, we're still having repercussions from that, but...
Yeah, I would, I would pull that one.
Pull it in and add the increased reimbursements for family home business.
You could add that, or please fix...
Fix mincer.
Yeah, please fix mincer.
I think those two should be in there, because that's what you identified, which is this one, and then...
Well, do we, do we, is the Child Protective 24-hour, is that an active item for this year?
As far as I know, it is, and again, that is a very sensitive one to put down because of how it came about in the first place, being it appears that then we're not valuing the quick response to children, so that's, that's...
Do you want us to take it off?
No, I think it's reasonable to put it on. I don't...
Do you want to submit the language?
My name on it particularly.
But nobody, but maybe even if it's not a priority, though, there will be opportunities for us to actually have sit downs, and that's something that we might, we might judiciously use, you know, have that point.
I think that there, you won't be alone on that. Many are going to say that that's not possible to do. It's not affordable unless we get additional funding. That's how I would phrase it.
And that would be probably a better discussion with, with Representative Governor's Office or help, and not necessarily our legislators. I mean, that's, that's one that would be legislatively difficult to fix.
And our community members are not falling through the cracks because we're not providing this at this time. We are currently servicing our community above, above-average standards.
Right, and that's the measure that we did meet, was that we had contact with alleged child victims within 24 hours, and we met that standard.
It's just the unfunded mandate portion of this that is...
Makes it difficult.
It's just, yeah.
If the system was broken and needed to be fixed, yes.
And it's, it's the, the process that has to be followed. Those two things take away from what we're supposed to be focused on.
And I think Jeff and I, when we were talking about this a few months ago, kind of estimated that $25,000 to $30,000 extra would be needed in our budget just to pay for people to be on call every weekend.
Sure. I guess I would propose to, to the board that we have, since we're talking legislative priorities, there's, this is not a legislative priority, but it is a priority that made, that Heidi and I talked about this, that we should, we should look for an opportunity to meet with Health and Human Services or the governor's staff, and we should have a couple of specific things. This being one, that's, that's an administrative issue, you know?
Right, and one of the things, I guess, that I might suggest is, you know, we all talk about fixing mincer, that, what does that really mean? And then, well, we are working on it, we're trying to fix it.
Always fixing.
The part that I think you...
You need to do it 24 hours, otherwise you're going to lose a percentage of your revenue.
The part I would suggest that you can talk from is, we are having to hire additional staff with no additional reimbursement to make this program work in our counties. That they will listen to, I believe, versus fix mincer, because they have been hearing that now for two years.
Yeah, that, that's great.
Right, so we're trying to, we're trying to sign people up for this new insurer that's taking, you know, how many people, was it like 1,300? How many people had to switch?
Oh, so they switched over because of that whole procurement? Well, gosh, I can't even remember, it was more than that.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, we, that, that's kind of another subject too, but I don't know, they don't want to go there right now.
No, no.
Okay, okay.
So should we mention when they talk to the Star Tribune, they shouldn't suggest they call their local agency after a holiday weekend?
Yes, that would be wonderful.
Yeah, so then I guess I just...
That was really tough, especially getting that the day after the, we have a human service board.
Well, and we were in a meeting here, so...
And we did get calls.
I bet.
So I would ask Sue to summarize her conversation with us, so I can inject that into this resolution. But our, our resolution will include the items that we're going to, that we've talked about, that we've identified, we'll have an opportunity to review quickly here, and then we'll redress the Health and Human Services issues based on this conversation.
Yeah, and break them down, these are legislative priorities and these are administrative priorities.
And we're going to want to be specific.
So those are two different, yeah.
Yep, we're going to want to be specific, like, you know, like these, this that references...
Yep.
The Senate bill or the House bill, we're going to want to be as specific as we can when it's a legislative issue, yeah.
And we can send it back for a review if we got time.
Yep, and we'll take the terminology straight from these organizations as they, as they put these things forward, if these are ones we want to put away behind, and that sentence at the end, this is how it's going to impact us.
Once you get it updated with Sue, can you send it to us so we don't get it at our next meeting, which is too late to change it?
Yeah, yeah, so you can send it to us, we can review.
Yeah, we've got two weeks between meetings, so we should be able to do that.
I don't have to do it by tomorrow.
Yes, I would be in St. Paul, but I'm always checking my email or whatever, so...
So do you want a verbal recap now, or do you want her to summarize it and send it?
She can summarize and send it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, Sue.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you all. Appreciate it. Letting me have time.
No, no, you're helping us.
Thanks for making the time to hang out with us.
That was a pleasure.
Really? You want to stay now?
Well, I can have a glass.
I got a red canal, I have to go.
Not that much of a pleasure.
No, I wouldn't say that.
All right, take care.
So that addresses, so county program aid, we know means supporting AMC's proposal for increased county program aid. Health and Human Services, we clarified, transportation funding, did we want to make that more specific?
Give us more money with less requirements.
Are we just supporting AMC's?
And I, I think, too, you know, the specificity, that I think if we ask David, he just said in the meeting today, we have how many bridges that are da-da-da-da-da? We need, we need to say, and we've got this much, you know, as far as our infrastructure, that we're responsible for, and we're supposed to do that with what? So in other words, that's specific.
Real specific things, the bridge, our bridge funding, our deficit in bridge funding and our deficit in, in maintenance projects, or how many millions of dollars?
19.
$19 million, you know, deficient in our, in our maintenance account. So we're going to have a couple of talking points, and then say, this is what you could help us.
And the other, the other thing is, while we recognize that that's not unique to us, its impact on us as a rural community is significant. And if you put in there, you know, the fact that Minnesota as a whole, where we are in the nation, as, as to our infrastructure ranking, which I think is fourth or fifth, and that 50% of our roads and bridges are over 50 years old, you know, we're, we're hearing that, but its impact here, we don't have an option to go a different route to get someplace.
And they have, but they visit us and they drive those roads.
They do visit us.
And they don't want to be on that bridge.
They don't.
Unless it's good.
I'm saying, yay to the engineers that made those bridges to last 10 years that we're still driving on 50 years later.
Yeah, no kidding. So as far as an economic development issue, what's more important than the infrastructure?
Again, coming out of yesterday, they said the infrastructure. If you don't have infrastructure? Infrastructure, education.
So I'll review these two pages out of AMC's list with Dave, and pick one or two items that we think have the biggest potential impact for us.
And then add our personal twist, which is what you're doing.
Yeah, you can add our specific issues, our funding amounts.
And then the Safe and Secure Courthouse Initiative was a conversation last week, so that, that is already very specific.
And if they want to retroactive those dollars, that's fine with us.
You're the only one that really has the story to tell there.
Yeah, we have quite a story to tell.
And the exemption, I think that's also very specific.
Yep.
500.
Yeah, that's an AMC proposal.
That's an AMC proposal, so we can pull that resolution or pull that language straight out, yep.
And the Commissioner for Making, I mean, I sent him our, our tax reports, you know, on a 1%, which is reflective of how you can see how we're impacted with our seasonal nature of tourism, and so...
I did, I did want to point out, you know, so we talked about how AMC's general proposals may or may not really reflect ours. St. Louis counties also may or may not reflect ours, so I just wanted to be clear about that.
Kind of our own.
Yeah, and so...
I was more looking at the format of how they organized it.
Yeah, right, which is great.
Well, we're not trying to duplicate it, because you know, I mean, we all know that if you have a, a form letter that everybody sends out, if the more that it...
They only read the first one.
It reflects you and your, your narrative.
We've got a logo chosen for our letterhead then.
Nice.
We're going to use Steph Wish copies logo. Nobody else will put that out there.
I guarantee it.
No, I completely...
Yeah, okay. Because St. Louis County had one for fiscal disparities, which I should...
It sort of exposes you too, when you just take it and cut and paste, and then it, it doesn't even apply to you.
When their fiscal disparity goes up, ours goes down.
All right.
So the, do we just want to put that together as a letter, or, or what Molly suggested that we do is that we actually have a motion to do an oral resolution to support these things?
I think the motion for resolution...
That then we'll, that then we'll confirm at the next meeting, which is just before we go to Minnesota counties.
I think, I think it brings credibility to the, and strength to the process if it's a resolution that's supported by a representation from all of our five districts and the commissioners, that we say that a letter can be...
A motion for the resolution will be at the next meeting, once you've reviewed it.
Before we go. And then, and then we could have it printed out, very bold, you know, large print on for our items.
See, the ratings, what you're saying.
You could, you could have pink.
I can put it in pink, it's still going to print out in black and grayscale on my print at all.
Yeah, and then, and then we'll have copies of that, then when we go to our meetings, that we can have those.
We could have it printed on t-shirts.
Could we just talk about, and, because I think we have this part down, but can we just talk about the structure? Because I haven't been to one of these before.
The schedule?
Yeah, I mean, I read through the schedule, and I don't see, and I see that, you know, we're, we're meeting with people, and on the schedule, I just, I'm assuming that it's just an AMC conference, and we're just meeting as AMC as counties, but you're talking about we're meeting with state representatives, legislators, and where's that part in here?
That's where, wherever you facilitate on your own, or if they come to a particular policy committee.
You call one?
Call, call them, or camp outside their door, or wait for them outside of the committee room, or...
Invite them to come here.
If you're big suckers, not the dumb, dumb ones.
Don't bother the really smart ones.
Yeah, you can call them out of the House or Senate chamber.
So, so what I'm saying is, what, so, so share some of those stories, I don't have a clue what you're talking about.
Well, sometimes boards that you sit on will have a meal, or something that you come to, and which representatives will come, and then you have an opportunity to talk to them at that meal. So any board that you're sitting on right now, or your policy committee, if there's an opportunity with that, that would be the occasion, otherwise it's, it's calling as Commissioner DeRosa suggests.
Oh, so you're not talking about just this two days, you're talking about as a strategy...
Moving forward.
Oh, I, okay, now I understand.
Like my meeting with Tom Bach, the EDA housing project.
Oh, I totally get, I totally get. You take this platform with, yeah, oh, I get, I get. I thought there was something here.
But also, but also at those two dates, you know, not that these meetings, these possible informational sessions aren't, aren't that important, but the last time we went, I think I went to one, and the rest of the time I spent Capitol trying to find...
Leverage, leverage those relationships.
Yeah, legislators who I knew were involved in this issue. And for you, Tony Warri is a great one. I mean, if you can get in front of Tony, I mean, he's the, he's the Senate Chair, Health and Human Service Finance, and great guy, and, and is very aware of all of our priorities, you know, so putting, putting your face to that, that you're our lead on this.
Right.
And then maybe you and I got to meet together, actually.
That would be really good. And so that's what, and that's where I'm thinking we could really use some strategizing. I mean, beyond this, this is, this meeting is about this, but beyond that, just really strategize those things, so that, because I don't know how to do them. I mean, it'd be really good to just...
That's what AMC does for us.
Yes, but, but it's not everything, and AMC's going to help us do that right here, but I think a lot of it is on our own to go, so to strategize how we're going to do that.
It is, and when you're meeting with them and having a conversation, to have a leave behind, like we're putting together.
Yeah.
Because they, they got a lot of stuff, so this, they can go back and visit, even if you just say, you know, so here.
Good, good, good. Well, I'd like to dig a little deeper. We're staying at this Intercontinental Hotel, but these conferences are not there, because at the bottom it says, we're going to the Capitol, there's no shuttle, you're on your own, either driving or taking the light rail. So we're downtown here, and the Capitol is up here, so everything is up there?
It's a tour, but they usually arrange, I mean, they're saying right now that they have no shuttle? They've always said so.
Yeah, it says, no shuttle to the Capitol because of ongoing renovation.
Oh.
So are, are sessions up there, or are they at the hotel?
Just that one.
Or just the tour is up there?
Yes, but the meetings are all at, at the hotel.
At the hotel, okay, well, I don't see where there's a tour.
I, I, there, you're exactly right, on the bottom down here, there's an asterisk.
Yeah.
And it's an asterisk saying, like here, it says, "Optional event from 3:30 to 5:00, details to follow," and that one says, "There's no shuttle, so transportation is on your own," but everything else here is at the hotel.
Okay.
So it's, and it's hard to read here, if you, I think if you go back, Julie printed it in color on your reservation.
I have it in color.
And I think it's going to be easier to call out this asterisk that says, "You're on your own for transportation," and find out where that applies, which events that applies to. But if there's not an asterisk at the end of the event...
It's happening at the hotel.
It's happening at the hotel.
Oh, follow the asterisk?
Follow the asterisk road.
It's only that one, but otherwise they're...
Yeah.
Yeah, and apparently it's just that one event on Thursday night, or Thursday?
Well, Thursday night is at the hotel.
Thursday afternoon.
Yeah, the Garden Court at the hotel. So this is on Thursday afternoon, going to the Capitol for a tour. Is that it?
So I would propose, so we, you and I'll talk about that specific meeting.
That'd be great, yep.
But there's, the other meeting that I want to make sure that we have is, we should figure out how to, for our Health and Human Service policy issues, we should figure out, who do we need to talk to? Can we, you know, can we talk to the Commissioner? Could we get in, in with her? I mean, that would be, that'd be awesome.
That would be awesome.
So...
The other thing I put down here is, I'd like to know the mincer board.
Yeah, well, that'd be helpful, too.
I'd like to know who are members of the mincer board, just find that out.
Yeah, but so, but I think we need a, we need a policy audience, you know, during that, two days somehow. And I don't know...
So are we basically putting all of our eggs in one basket with the health situation, rather than, you know, there's broadband, I could go to that, but...
Oh, yeah, no, we...
No, that's our focus now, but that doesn't mean we're...
There's a couple of things that I'm going to...
Their transportation.
Gary and I have worked on this, this agricultural designation issue, you know, so I think I'll, maybe we'll talk about that, but that'll come out of that committee also, and we'll probably talk to somebody about that, you know?
Frank, you're specifically asking us to do our homework and, and set up a meeting so that you and Jan can sit down with somebody at a policy level during this conference.
Correct.
Okay, so let's all make some phone calls and make sure that we're, that we get something.
Get that meeting, yep.
Get that meeting. You can make some phone calls, I can talk to Sue, we can talk, we can figure out who we should, who will be available.
Yeah, and have the meeting, yeah.
And try to push that as, as close to policy-level decision-makers as we can. So that, that's what you're asking for, is to try to set up one meeting like that where you guys can sit down and, and have this conversation.
And the other thing is, sometimes sort of grease the shoe in that regard, I mean, if you can set it at a breakfast meeting before they get in there.
Yeah, about Mark and everybody else.
Yeah, and you say, hey, you know, we'll, we'll take you to breakfast, we'd like to da-da-da-da-da.
Yeah.
I, I think that's part of the strategy, is to say, catch them at breakfast, if you catch them, try to catch them evening and the dinner, it's...
Get the surgeon in the morning.
And you're...
The surgeon of the day.
Catch, catch them in the morning, if you can do it. In other words, I'm saying, if we incentivize it, it might help grease the shoe.
Okay, we're gonna, okay.
Anything else?
We'll take it on our treat fund.
Don't treat fund. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Thank you.
Thank you.